...........................
....................................
Let us all bow our heads. Our Father, who come before you tonight, is giving thanks for your blessings and your mercy and your grace. We ask that you continue to bless us. Bless this meeting and all the citizens that are here to hear these presentations in this meeting, and bless our commission board, and give us the knowledge, the wisdom, and the patience to make the right decision. I ask that you guide us and guide us, and I know that you will guide us in the right way. This is my prayer. In your name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any additions or deletions to the published agenda?
Yes, sir.
None?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We appreciate the agenda as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second in order to approve the published agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is unanimously. I entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I move.
Motion for approval. I have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is unanimously. And clerk. All right. We'll move on to a presentation of a proclamation honoring Ms. Geraldine Stevenson Honeycutt. Uh, commissioners, go to the front.
My pleasure to read a proclamation into the minutes tonight to honor Ms. Geraldine Stevenson Honeycutt on her celebration of 100 years of life, and have a lot of her family here. Y'all will come up, please, and help us honor her. She cannot be here tonight. Didn't quite feel like putting in more time tonight, but her family would come on up. Okay, everybody, everybody can see just. This proclamation honors Ms. Geraldine Stevenson Honeycutt on her 100th birthday, where as long as she gets life, it's a blessing for an individual and for a community which benefits from the knowledge, creativity, and experiences this individual brings to all. And whereas Geraldine Stevenson Honeycutt was honored by friends and relatives on Sunday, April 30th, 2023, in celebration of her 100th birthday on April 30th, 2023. And whereas Geraldine Stevenson was born in Johnston County, North Carolina, on April 30th, 1923. And whereas Geraldine Stevenson married Rupert Honeycutt January 9th, 1948, and for 46 years was his wife, and was blessed with two children, Nancy Honeycutt and Debbie Honeycutt Turleyton, four grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. And whereas Geraldine Stevenson Honeycutt worked for First Citizens Bank in Booz Creek, North Carolina, serving as vice president upon retirement in 1991. And whereas Geraldine Stevenson Honeycutt served as treasurer of Coats Senior Center and on the board of directors, also volunteered for Meals on Wheels for 11 years, as well as volunteering at the Coats Museum. And whereas Geraldine Stevenson Honeycutt attended Coats Baptist Church, is a member of the Coats Women's Club, received the Coats Woman of the Year on two separate occasions, and was inducted into the Coats Hall of Fame. And whereas Geraldine Stevenson Honeycutt has lived during the most eventful century of this nation's history, and has been a model and inspiration to her family and to those who have known her. And whereas the Harnett County Board of Commissioners recognizes Geraldine Stevenson Honeycutt for her longevity of life and her lifelong commitment to family, friends, and community. Now therefore, the Harnett County Board of Commissioners does extend to Geraldine Stevenson Honeycutt our sincere congratulations on achieving this milestone in her life, and further wish her all the best and continued health and happiness in the years to come. Declared this 15th day of May, 2023, Harnett County Board of Commissioners Matthew Nickel, Chair, William Morris, Vice Chair, Barbara McCoy, Brooks Matthews, Louis W. Weatherston, Commissioners. All right, and we'll get a picture.
Here, I'm not going to use a microphone.
Look, fuck.
Not going to use a microphone for this one, but we have another proclamation if I can get the Over Hills High School Marching Jaguars to come up. All right. So proclamation recognizing the Over Hills High School Marching Jaguars. Whereas the NATO Parade of Nations is the longest continuing running parade in Hampton Roads and the only parade in the United States honoring NATO. And whereas the NATO Parade of Nations consists of over 75 parade units with local and visiting high school bands, U.S. and international military bands, and colorful floats which represent each of NATO members' nations. Whereas the Over Hills High School Marching Jaguars were one of 24 high school bands selected to participate in the NATO Parade of Nations on April 22nd, 2023. And whereas the Marching Jaguars won runner-up grand champions and were one of only two bands to receive the highest rating of both. And whereas drum major Madison Springer led the Marching Jaguars through the parade and earned Best Drum Major Award. Now therefore, the Harnett County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize and congratulate the Over Hills High School Marching Jaguars for their outstanding accomplishments in the representation of the county of Harnett with pride and dignity. Be it further resolved as a proud community that the Harnett County Board of Commissioners has proclaimed May 15th, 2023, as the day to honor and recognize the Over Hill High School Marching Jaguars declared this 15th day of May, 2023. It is always wonderful to recognize the accomplishments of those in our county. So thank you all very much. All right, we will now move on to the public comment period. I will open up the floor for public comment. Each presenter will have three minutes in order to speak, and we will not take up more than 30 minutes. Before I get started, the sheet in the back of the room, did anybody sign up for the public hearing or one of the public hearings instead of the public comment, or is everybody on here wishing to speak during public comment period? Yeah? All right, well then we'll run through the list, and we'll get to you if I call your name and you're here for one of the public hearings, go ahead and just let me know. First on the list, I have Mr. Jerry Rivas.
Put this where it was.
Thank you.
Jerry Rivas, 364 Twin Ponds Road, Sanford, North Carolina. It has been approximately two months since Deputy Kevin Lattart negligently and callously, with callous disregard for the safety of others, drove 95 miles an hour through a red light and killed Brian and Pat Finch. And yet, there have been no charges. Nothing. The Highway Patrol says he had his lights and sirens on, but at 95 miles an hour, a car is outrunning his sirens. And three witnesses that I talked to, who were on scene, said he gave one blip of his siren before he came through the intersection. Supposedly today, there was a grand jury convened to hear the matter. The last time I know of a grand jury being convened concerning police officers was back in 2015, when Vernon Stewart presented such a weak case that Deputy Nick Cahagas got away with murdering John Livingston. And we still insist on saying the pledge of allegiance before every meeting. Where is the liberty and the justice for all? Where is it? When did the lives of the citizenry become so cheap that rogue police officers, stupid police officers, can kill innocent people and get away with it? How is that possible? And it's not just them. Last week, on Highway 87, traveling south on a motorcycle, I get passed by an ambulance, Ben Haven Fire Department, no sirens, no lights, and I speed up, and this young lady driving this ambulance was doing 77 miles an hour in a 55 mile an hour zone. Now, North Carolina state law says that if you get caught doing 15 miles an hour over the limit, you lose your license for 30 days. I got up beside her and flashed 5-5 twice, then I got up in front of her, and I slowed down to 55 miles an hour, and she slowed down. And I guess that's what it's going to take. It's going to take the people to start taking actions. And then, when I called the fire chief, I find out these aren't even county employees. They're employees of some contractor. Says Harnett County all over the ambulance, but they're not employees. He said he was going to get back to me. He never did. He's such a good liar. Hell, he ought to be sheriff. Anybody who can lie like that. But what's it going to take for there to be justice in Harnett County? And this is not just, I mean, we're in Harnett County, for God's sake. This is not Los Angeles or New York, where you've got abusive cops beating the hell out of people. It's Harnett County. Good Lord. Something's got to change. It's got to change, and only we can change it.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Tim Moore? Is it Tim?
My comment was specifically into something that's on the agenda.
Regarding a zoning? Okay. Perfect. Kenneth Smith?
Same here. I'm here for a rezoning.
Kenneth Smith, senior? Did not read this one. Someone lives in Irwin on Bun Level Road, 4630?
430 Stanley Price. That was a mistake.
Stanley Price? Yes, sir. Same?
Yes, that was a mistake.
Okay. No worries, sir. Angela Smith Bowman? Same? All right. Mr. Alan Longman? Same? No?
Hello, my name is Alan Longman. I'm at 234 Hamilton Road in Barn Level. Reason I have to speak today is mainly because of what happened with the deputy that everybody's talking about, went too fast and hit and killed the Finch family. The problem is this, that it was supposed to be a memorial set where they were going to put down from the family, given to the family, sent here to be put out. And when she got the item, at 4:00 in the morning, they took her Reggie posters, put them on the porch, and set the house on fire with her family in it. Where is Suzanne Matthews, the DA? They barely got out with their lives. The son had insulation problems, and they turned around, they had to go, they brought him to the hospital to recover. The point is, how politics gets so much that you will do anything to silence people and threatening them? She is a Republican, and why are you threatening people who may not believe in the form of politics you do from within your own group, risk their lives doing something? How did they know it was going to be planted the next day? Just hours afterwards, the house gets set on fire? There's many things that bother me, and I think they need to be investigated. I don't see Suzanne Matthews doing anything at all. I don't understand why she would try to stop the investigation that's happening for the sheriff by trying to threaten people involved in the execution of that court against the ethics from the bar. She has to owe certain duties which she has not performed. Again, on her site, she has a flag of the same people of January 6th on her site. How can someone enforce the law of this land, its legal system, and carry on theology that's against everything we stand for and everything she took oath of office for? I see nothing being done. Angela Scarsborough is being prosecuted by the state. We have enough, because she did this, you don't understand what the law is, because she did this, she's under, she's demanded by law to press charges against the sheriff for the same thing, because we have evidence that she hasn't produced a single thing. We have evidence that she was being chased, followed, and harassed, including a judge.
Thank you, Mr. Longman. Ms. Elizabeth Longman?
Thank you, everybody. I just wanted to let you know that in our pursuit to make sure that Harnett County citizens do not endure the injustices and the murders of the Wayne Coats administration, we not only have engaged the county attorney, who is looking over the paperwork, but we've also engaged the North Carolina District Attorney's Office. And he did give a letter, I'll give Mr. Trout, I have copies for everyone, but Mr. Trout will confirm what I'm saying, that it's a priority for them that all personnel meet standards and have the training necessary to protect the public and prevent crime. That's right, they have to have the training necessary to protect the public and prevent crime. Remember the people from Santa Fe Road who came here and begged you for extra protection? Remember them? How many bodies have been collected off of Santa Fe Road since then? How many bodies? They came and asked for your help, and they got nothing. Also here, I think at the end there, the Attorney General's Office instructs us to engage with our county commissioners and our county manager to make sure this stops. The Attorney General is saying, you guys have to start stepping up. They said by law, they cannot. It's a weird law. By law, they cannot step in. You guys have to start stepping in and doing something about this. We are so horrified by what they did to Ms. Linda Sanderman's home. We thought this happened, I read about this happening in the 60s, but this happened here. They got to my son, who still sits in that jail. They got to him, and he came and said, Mama, I thank you, I thank God for Wayne Coats. Wayne Coats is the most awesome person in the world. Wayne Coats will be shared forever. In fact, I voted for him as many times as I could, ma'am, Wayne Coats is good, and because my son is my son, he says, and I thank him especially for the pornography that now we've all been given, Lord, I thank him. I am so grateful for the drugs. As long as we keep it under an ounce, we will be okay. This is what you are letting go on without touching. Without touching. Said Wayne Coats is awesome. This is candy, Mama. We've got pornography and we've got drugs. I am never, 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 never going to say anything against Wayne Coats again. Not even about the training of the two people that he had here. Oh, the training is perfect. Wayne Coats himself, and he kept mentioning the name Wayne Coats, which he never has. He never has. He has his own situation, doesn't care to hoot about who this Wayne Coats person is. But for some reason today, my son kept saying Wayne Coats, Wayne Coats, and he would slip in what is going on there. He said, nobody talked to the grand jury today when they went in there for the inspection. Nobody talked to the grand jury. They were all told, if you talk to them, all this will go away. Guys, please, please, ask your county attorney, Mr. Snow. Ask him if there is cause, if there is law that justifies the removal of Wayne Coats, please do it.
Thank you, Ms. Longman. Right, having nobody else signed up, I will now close the floor for public comment. Now I will move on to item number eight. It's going to be a public input session regarding the opioid task force. Coley Price, you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, good evening, members of the board. Hope everybody's doing well. If you don't mind, we would like to just give a brief presentation about the opioid crisis that we're dealing with, and we're going to talk a little bit about the timeline of what's happened over the last five or six months, look at the strategies that we've kind of put together, talk about the task forces in place, talk to you a touch about reaching role and how that is helping us as far as the asset that it's doing for our county. Listen to the public as far as public input session tonight, and then talk a little bit about the next steps as far as what we see happening on the front after we hear the public input comments. So if you'll just bear with us, you know, the United States has experienced an epidemic of drug overdose deaths, while there's no corner in the country that's gone untouched by the overdose crisis, it has particularly hit rural America really hard. And so, we were, Chris is going to talk just briefly a little bit about the settlement dollars as far as what sparked this from Attorney General Stein, so I'm going to let him come speak a little bit about that, and I'm just going to go through briefly about kind of where we're at and what we've done with the task force for Harnett County.
So, for members, you've heard about settlements, but just for the public, can you go back over that? So what started the opioid task force back in September was the initial settlement that came through, which gave the county a little over $6 million. that came through, uh, which gave the county a little over six million dollars. Uh, now, uh, that's over eighteen-year period and we have received three payments at this, at this point. Um, and so what we wanted to do, obviously as we receive that money, is to determine how the best use those dollars because, again, six million dollars over eighteen years is not going to cover everything that we wanna do. Now fortunately, uh, this year, we also received, um, well, there's a potential for another settlement, uh, which does involve, um, some of the pharmacies, CBS Walgreens, Walmart, Teva, and Allergan. That is going to give an additional six hundred million dollars to the state of North Carolina with Harnett County's portion being about five point one million dollars. Uh, and that's going to be paid over about fifteen-year period. Uh, it's paid differently based on each defendant and their timeline, but again, a little over five point one million dollars. So, in total, over that fifteen, eighteen-year period, the county will be receiving a little over eleven million dollars to be able to spend directly on the opioid epidemic. So again, um, imperative that we develop a comprehensive plan to figure out how the best spend that money and also be able to fill in the gaps with some other funding, whether it be grants or other appropriations. So again, uh, started this opioid task force to, uh, start making those decisions.
Okay, so that's what kinda sparked this as far as the settlement dollars. So Harnett County had kinda put together a task force and it started slow, but then it got really, really well as far as the collaborative efforts as far as what's happening within the county. So in September, the stakeholders came together in the bottom of the opioid crisis and what resources that we currently have available. So if you'll see up on your screen and on the PowerPoint, I just want to briefly go through this because this is kind of incredible of what's happened over the last five months as far as what's been put in place. Our EMS, our sheriff's departments, our health department, DSS, Good Hope Hospital, Daymark, Sandhills, Harnett County Schools, Campbell University, uh, District Attorney, elected officials, two of our commissioners sit on this task force, faith-based organizations, uh, local municipal administrators, families affected by opioid disorder, opioid use disorder, the ones that have lost loved ones, and individuals in recovery. And we also have some retired physicians that become a part of this task force. So we've been meeting on a regular basis over the past six months and sharing ideas and concerns and looking at the resources that we have available. In October, uh, we provided updates on educational opportunities and started moving forward with our strategic plan. In February, we were very, um, fortunate to, um, to have, um, Campbell University right here at our back door, tremendous asset. Dr. Tillman, that'll speak in just a minute, is gonna come talk a little bit about the strategic planning process and kinda what we're at in that. Uh, he's had his students involved with interviews to assist in moving forwards with defining the strategic planning process and seeing where Harnett County is at. March twenty-seventh, we had Dr. Agnello at Campbell University come and give a very good presentation on the, um, regarding the current state of the opioid problem in Harnett County. That was a tremendous presentation about definition of it, how it works, what it affects, how it affects the brain and what it does there as far as the addiction is concerned. Uh, in April, um, we had an update from the Campbell students regarding the interviews that they had pulled together, uh, collaborative prioritization list and determining the next steps for being small group research for program pricing and sustainability. In May, the Reaching Rule Group traveled to Greenfield, Massachusetts to visit a MAT program and a reentry program. We just got back last week and, and if I could, I'd like for, uh, Dr. White and, and Mark to, to come up because I'd like to introduce the Reaching Rule team. So Reaching Rule is a one-year initiative that is, is, um, is by the Department of Justice, the Office of Justice Programs, the Bureau of Justice, and CDC, also sponsored by the National Association of Counties. We were able to put together a grant in the fall and, um, lo and behold, we were one of eight counties in the whole entire United States that got accepted in this process. So what does that done for us? Well, the timing couldn't be more perfect. As far as where we're at, what we're doing, our strategic plan, understanding the resources that we have, this just gives us more ammunition across the whole United States as far as coming together as a group. We were just outside of Washington DC in February doing leadership classes. We just got back from Boston, looking at other MAT programs and how they're doing their reentry programs. It was just a tremendous asset for us to listen to that and see a rural county putting their, their actions into works as well. So that kinda gives a, a brief overview of that. So with us tonight, I have Dr. David Tillman, who is Chair of Public Health for Campbell University. I have Dr. Jermaine White, who is Assistant Superintendent for Harnett County Schools. And I have Mr. Mark Marisus, Executive Director of Good Hope Hospital. The other two members along with Chris and myself are John Rouse, our Health Department Director, and Jeff Armstrong is the Captain of the Sheriff's Office. So we have a tremendous group that is put together here and I can't thank these guys enough for their time, energy, and effort and what they put together, the passion they have to move forward with what we can do to help Harnett County residents.
And, uh, just piggybacking on the, um, the Reaching Rule and where we just came from, Franklin County, Massachusetts. So, uh, it was a MAT program we got to see, but what they have developed is an opioid task force that was put together ten years ago. So they had been working at this for ten years at this point. They had developed quite the program they had built up, but they were like us. They started very slow and so they gave us good input on how to get a good team going. It is, uh, involve all the, the stakeholders, which we have done, start developing small groups, start, uh, hitting on items that you can start implementing, uh, pretty quickly. To be patient, um, yes, we have this money as it comes in, but do it correctly. Uh, don't put too much on top of you, uh, on, on ourselves, um, to where you kinda get lost. So just be focused and take it slow and it'll develop. So again, it took them ten years to get where they're at and we've been at this since September. So, uh, that was a good, it was really good to see where they've come at this point.
What we're doing is looking at sustainable efforts. Obviously, the amount of money that we have, we're gonna try to put in after we hear the comments and kinda see where we're at. You've got sixteen on a list that we'll go through in just a minute. And, um, I'd like for, for Dr. Tillman, if he would, just to come and briefly speak about the strategic planning process and kinda what we're at in that and kinda how that works.
Thank you, thank you, members of the board and those of you who are interested in the community about this process that I think is vital to our county. Uh, Harnett County has, uh, overdose death rate that's about thirty-six percent higher than the state average, as well as a, a drug overdose emergency department visit rate that's about twenty-six percent higher than the state average. It's a crucial issue. And I, I would like to commend the board as well as, uh, the county leadership for taking the time to strategically plan our response rather than just moving to, uh, to the expenditure of these funds. Uh, as a result of our collaborative work, uh, we've been able to lay out some priorities from the community. From December to March, as has already been referenced, a team of graduate students working with me went into the community, interviewed many of the people in this room about, uh, what it is that they thought were the gaps in our systems. It's a piece of the puzzle that most people don't know about their community because it's hard for these complicated issues to be talked about by all of the parties. So they put together, uh, from the interviews, a list of items and then took another layer of clarification by taking a look at things that came up in multiple interviews and verifying that these are evidence-based responses to the overdose crisis. And the items that you see listed out here came up in multiple interviews and were validated as evidence-based approaches. These items represent every tier of intervention and prevention. So you have things like early prevention, preventing substance use from ever starting, the programs with, uh, Dr. White in the school system, uh, programs that are gonna be focused on supporting families, particularly families that involve foster children or grandparents who are raising their grandkids as a result of substance use. As well as secondary supports for people who are, need treatment and who are in recovery, including innovative approaches to law enforcement and prosecution, which we were seeing demonstration projects last week, as well as responding to comprehensive needs like housing and transportation. And then finally, tertiary responses such as post-overdose response teams, community paramedicine, and expanding access to detoxification and medications for opioid use disorder. These things are complicated. What's happening now is that over the, the next few months, we'll take these items and the prioritization process that we've been, uh, a part of and lay out a timeline over the next six to seven years about how these things will fit into one another so that Harnett County can move forward in a comprehensive response. Uh, four of these items will be moving on very quickly, we expect. And so, uh, we, I would just like to say once again that it is, as a public health academician, it is just outstanding to see a county government willing to do this work so that in, you know, by twenty thirty, we are a shining light in the state for how to respond to this in a meaningful way. So thank you.
So, uh, with that background, what we're here for today is to get input from the public. So another key aspect of all this is, uh, outside of the opioid task force, the Reaching Rule Group, is we wanna hear from the public. To hear, uh, uh, our priorities that we have listed out or items that we may not have thought about and we wanna hear from the public. We're gonna take all that, everything we just learned from our, our newest trip that we just got back from, the public input, the, uh, all the information we've gathered at this point, and really start drafting that strategic plan. Um, and then, uh, the idea is to begin implementation in fiscal year twenty-four, beginning July one, perhaps earlier, but again, uh, coming up on the new fiscal year, start implementing some of these priorities. And then as Dr. Tillman has mentioned, as part of his plan is six-year plan and keep building out from that and in adapting as we, as we need to as this epidemic to use it to change as well.
And there's also a survey online at Harnett.org. For those that couldn't be here tonight, it's gonna be up another thirty or forty more days. You're more than happy to come in and look at these sixteen strategies that we have, add to it, give your comments because we want to hear from you. Like Chris said, if there's something we've left out or how to move forward with this process, we're more than happy to do so. So again, I'd like to thank the gentlemen here for Reaching Rule. I'd like to thank the task force and I'd like to thank each of you for your support as we move forward, we're trying to find a solution to this problem here in our county. Thank you.
I have a question. See your list here, uh, it's very impressive. When you include, um, working with, uh, youth intervention, does that include going into the schools too or having some kind of program in these schools in Harnett County?
Good evening, Chairman Nicola, members of the board. Uh, Ms. McCoy, absolutely it does. Um, what we're looking to be able to do, um, is we have a, a lot of things that are kinda in the works right now, um, going into the summer that we hope to be able to implement when school opens. Um, some treatment programs for students who may be going through issues at home, uh, with families who are dealing with opioid use. Uh, we have a vaping epidemic and some of you may well know if you read those things, we want to deal with those things as well. Um, so we do have some things that we're putting together and we really wanna be aggressive starting this summer, um, from a school district perspective, of course, under the direction of Dr. Fleming, to, to be able to, uh, be aggressive at trying to thwart that. So we're, we're excited about doing that.
Thank you. I think that is very important because when the story comes, coming in the forms of pieces of candy. We need to have some form of education in our schools. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions or comments before I open the floor? I do wanna say thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the hard work that your team is doing. Now, this time I'll open the floor for public input session regarding the opioid task force. I would ask that each speaker, uh, kindly, uh, limit their comments to about three minutes so we can get through it. Uh, if you would, I will now open the floor.
We heard a lot about dollars and cents. We heard a lot about dollars and cents. We didn't hear one number about the people of Harnett County. We didn't hear one number about the people of Harnett County going to be impacted. We heard a lot of future plans when we're scraping dead bodies out of cars, off of ditches, off of sideways. People are doing their best to grapple with the opioid crisis now. That's why you are given the money, to act now. These guys are very comfortable. They have salaries, they have homes, they're good. People for that opioid crisis money need the help now. Setting up a trash can with a red disposable lid on it and doing a needle exchange doesn't take six white men and one black man to do. You can help now. You have the money now. The people need help now. There was people outside of business who have to go routinely check cars in their parking lot to make sure that the person in there has not OD'd to the point that they cannot be awakened again. You could have given Narcan to every single business owner in Harnett County now, but we've had a long academic explanation of how to do nothing for the people of Harnett County. Not once did they say, we hope to, except for the school, who had a summer plan because the school said, summer, we have a timeline, this is our plan, that's what we're doing. These are the dudes, hey, when will the first Harnett County citizen experiencing an opioid crisis be helped? The jail is full of at least half of them in there, mental health, drug addicts. It's not hard to find them, they're right down the street. Did they take a walk in there? Did they take a walk in there and see how these guys need help yesterday? No, they came and told you about the money and how they have the money and how more money's coming and their priority is what? The money. Your priority, please, let it be for the people of Harnett County while they go chasing the money. You go do something for the people of Harnett County that need help now. Too many families are torn. If our Senator Jim Bergen can walk around with a needle exchange pack in his pocket with a QR code to get help if you're an addict, you can do something other than explain to us how much of nothing you're continuing to do with six million dollars plus coming in.
Thank you for your input. Anybody else?
Name is Alan Longman. I'm at two thirty-four Hamilton Dry, uh, Road in Bun Level. The reason I wanna speak is that I hear so much about what's going on and nothing of substance. One, the major problem you have, which was discussed with Jim Bergen, was that you have to have an expanded Medicaid system to pay for the treatment, to make sure they go, and you need public transportation that will deliver them on time for treatment, otherwise if they're late, they're dropped and it's over for them. When they talk about imaging, I work with an individual who's world-known for the imaging of drugs, and that is Dr. Steve Dewey from the Feinstein Institute, Manhasset, Long Island. He used to work for Brookhaven Laboratories. The brain takes a long time to recover once you start taking the drugs, up to two years. Crystal meth, almost no recovery. You go downhill as long as you're taking it. Even people on alcohol have problems with seizures and do not get proper medicine to help their brain heal. There's medicine that helps the drug addict's brain heal so they can think. It doesn't allow them to think is why it takes two years for them to recover and they keep going off, not because they don't understand, it's because their brain will not hit the executive areas of the brain. That was Dr. Steve Dewey who did this research. The other thing you're not mentioning, you need transportation. Ninety-five percent of the people do not go because they get dropped out because they don't have timely transportation to the treatments and to the meeting. People here also, you have to have officers who actually believe, it doesn't matter what you train. I was a manager for years for IBM, uh, Dr. John Bayless. And what he taught was that you have to have the same culture. You have to believe in what you're being trained in and it has to be enforced from the leaders. You don't have that with the sheriff. You actually have the local paper saying, yeah, the Narcan agents will still do it the old way even though all this stuff is coming. That's not the mentality you need, you need new people at the helm. You need the transportation, you need the advancement of, uh, Medicaid in order to get started. I would never not mention that. And the twelve-step system does not work that well. You keep hearing that because of a religious background or because it's being pushed. You have to have other alternative systems employed and I don't see that in the schedule or how this is done. The state troopers do not carry Narcan. They should be the first responders to a scene, they need that Narcan, you can get that person and save their lives. It's gonna take two years, it's gonna be back and forth, channeling they call it. Channeling. They have to get treatment, you have to be persisted on that treatment and you have to have the Narcan applied. to have the Narcan applied. Officers here wait the people die and will not give them the Narcan, which they have or should have in their car, is the main means of saving people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longman. Anybody else to add to the discussion?
I actually had no intention on speaking on it, but I was just kind of listening. I'm Yvette Watson, living at 1082 Melody Lane, Cameron. And I just kind of looked at the numbers that they presented, five million, right? And then the six coming. So if we look at that as a total and we look at the years, we'll just take it out to the 18 years, just a quick estimate was about less than $51,000 a month. And if the people, let's say the current people that are on staff are actually getting paid from that, what really is going towards the actual treatment? When will it happen? What will be left after you remove the funds for the people that are actually doing these investigations and doing these analysis and everything? How much will actually be left for the people to do the work and for the supplies that are needed? If you look at less than $51,000 a month, that's pretty scary and we only have half of that right now. That's it.
Ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Joe Langley and I reside at 298 Kirk Adams Road in Anger. It is my honor and privilege to serve as the Board Chair of the Boys and Girls Club of Central Carolina, an organization dedicated to the well-being and the development of young people in our community across Lee, Chatham, and Harnett County. Before we proceed, I'd like to commend the board and the task force for the comprehensive list of priorities that you have assembled to address the opioid crisis in Harnett. The depth and breadth of this list truly reflects the gravity of the situation and your commitment to finding effective lasting solutions. It is an inspiration to see such dedication and it mirrors our mission at the Boys and Girls Club to create a safer, healthier environment for our youth and community. To that end, I'm pleased to introduce a young lady who embodies that mission in every aspect of her work. Sarah Womack is the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Central Carolina. Under her leadership, our organization has made incredible strides in creating programs that not only enrich the lives of our youth, but also strengthen our community. Sarah will provide you more detailed information on how our club can assist in addressing some of the priorities outlined in your response to the opioid crisis. It is our belief that by working together, we can make significant progress in this fight against opioid abuse, ultimately ensuring a brighter, healthier future for our youth and for our community. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Joe. My name's Sarah Womack. I live at 2138 Southern Road in Sanford, North Carolina. I want to thank the commissioners for their support of the Boys and Girls Club of Central Carolina, specifically the Lillington location at the Robin Page Club. Your support has been instrumental in the impact we've been able to make in the lives of children. As it relates to the opioid crisis, I appreciate the work of the commission and that this is indeed one of the in-depth and involved issues facing our society today. Of the priorities that were shared earlier, we believe the Boys and Girls Club addresses four specifically. And I can share this information afterwards, but obviously early youth intervention, family support services and education, education awareness and social marketing, and peer support. But that said, I want to share with you why it's important that we continue to fund the work of the Boys and Girls Club and how our impact through the opioid crisis is significant. I asked a donor recently why she gives to the Boys and Girls Club and she shared a number of reasons and then I said, "But what's your why?" And she said, "Well," she said, "I can go in the club on any given day and see a kid come in for the first day." And she said, "They have dead eyes." And I said, "What do you mean by that?" She said, "Well, you know how kids usually have a spark and they look joyful and they are energetic and hopeful?" She said, "Kids come into our club all the time and they don't look hopeful. They're not energetic, there's no spark." And she said, "But I can come back in a week and I'll see that same kid come bounding into the door and they've got that spark, they've got the twinkle in their eye and they've got hope." She said, "The Boys and Girls Club of Central Carolina gives kids hope." And so when I think about the opioid crisis, I know it's a layered issue and I know that hope is not the only solution to it. But as it relates to kids, I think giving kids hope for a better future is perhaps the first step in addressing a much larger problem. So we appreciate your support ongoing and any support that could come out of this situation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I wanted to take a moment and say that I appreciate all the hard work you guys do over there for the children so much. Continue. Anybody else?
I want to say that I've always been in support of the Boys and Girls Club simply because, went to a conference one year and in that conference, they had speakers from the Boys and Girls Club of North Carolina. And they said, "Any child or any kid that went through the Boys and Girls Club had a chance of having a 98%," the schools had a chance of a 98% graduation. And I applaud you for the work that you do. And anytime you need my assistance, let me know.
Thank you.
I just have a comment about that. I definitely applaud you too as well. I grew up not even here. I grew up in Boston and Boys and Girls Club was a safety. That was a home for a lot of people. I grew up there. My mother was an educational director that, um, but I forgot her name. I mean, she did like five, like five different hats. And the kids literally came there for a home, for people that cared for them and taught them to, you know, show them that they cared, taught them what's right, what's wrong. They really felt loved. And so it would be lovely for us to have more Boys and Girls Clubs here because a lot of people went on to do great things in our really strong community that went to the Boys and Girls Club there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See, now that's the conversation that I like to be out here having, you know? We don't have all the answers. We're sitting here and mind you, this pot of money isn't a pot of money. It's not nearly enough to scratch the surface, but we're trying to look at where exactly we are going to put our resources and what to focus on. You brought up the 12-step program. You know, one of the first, first, first things in 12-step is, you know, admitting that you have a problem. I think this entire nation has gone so long without actually focusing and admitting that we have a problem, but I think we're trying to do that here now. And I applaud everybody, you know, it takes a village and, you know, we got it with the schools, children are an incubator for our future, so we need to focus on that. But I appreciate everybody's input and comment and we're going to do this together. So, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak during this public input session? At this time, I'm going to close the floor for the public input session regarding the opioid task force and I will move on to item nine, public hearing for proposed zoning change for Plan 2303-001.
Hi there and good evening commissioners. Sarah Arbor, Long Range Planner for Harnett County Development Services. Our first proposed rezoning tonight is a request from the applicant, Mr. James Moore, in huge proposing to rezone a property from RA 30 to commercial. The property is 17.3 acres located at 11132 US 401 North in Fuquay Varina in the Hector's Creek Township. Property is located just north of the Broad's Club Road and just south of the Wake County line. Surrounding land uses for the property consist of single-family residential, however, there are quite a few non-residential uses in the, in the close proximity. So you can see on the zoning map there, the property is surrounded currently by RA 30, however, there are quite a few commercial parcels there in the vicinity. This area is sort of trendy, non-residential more and more. Down here, the land use map, you can see that employment mixed-use development note there just to the south. It's just another area where there, where more and more properties are trending non-residential. Photographs of the site have been provided for your review. You can see the view there of the site from 401 as well as 401, US 401 facing north and south there, showing the good site distances. Across the road there is a Sherman, Sherman Pine subdivision. So the property will have access to public water and private septic will be utilized. As far as the traffic count for the section of US 401, it is 8,200 trips per day. Through SaaS evaluation, staff found that the requested rezoning changed to commercial will not have a negative impact on the community based on its location along a major thoroughfare as well as the presence, presence, excuse me, of several non-residential uses in the area. Staff found that although the requested zoning district is not fully compatible with the existing land use classification of medium-density residential, that it is in close proximity of the employment mixed-use land use designation. The requested zoning would enhance and maintain, the staff found, excuse me, that the requested zoning would enhance and maintain public health, safety, and general welfare due to the non-residential growth patterns along US 401 and the required site improvements once site is developed for commercial use. Staff found that due to the size of the parcel and the existing zoning, that the application does not need to be considered for a small-scale rezoning. With that evaluation, staff did recommend approval for this request to rezone. And at the May 1st, Harnett County Planning Board, the board voted four to one to recommend approval of this rezoning due to the existing businesses in the area, the access to US 401, and the potential site improvements that would be required. There was one resident to speak in opposition at the planning board meeting. They spoke with concerns of an increase in traffic along US 401 that could cause safety concerns due to a curve in the road as well as concerns about use of a septic tank. If a septic system were to fail, the environmental impacts of that. And staff is now open. The commissioners have any questions? Thank you.
Any commissioners have any questions or comments?
Has a TIA been performed?
No, sir. So a TIA has not been performed. And I believe for this, depending on the type of project, a TIA may not be performed, but it will have review, of course, from NCDOT at the point-of-sight plan review.
I think we ought to make a policy, anytime you come for a rezoning, you get a TIA.
Any other comments, questions? At this time, I'll now open the floor for the public hearing for the proposed zoning change.
All right, thank you.
If anybody would like to speak in regards to this proposed zoning change, now is your
Hello, my name is Jim Moore. I'm actually the developer of this, of this project. And, you know, I actually signed that form at the beginning thinking that I, this would be my opportunity to do it. One thing I have noticed that typically when you, whenever you have something like this, the only comments that ever come forward are the negative comments and people in opposition. So what I, you know, going back, I'm originally from western Colorado, deep in the mountains, Silk, Colorado. We have one roundabout circle in the center of town. So I certainly understand a lot of the local residents concerned with growing population. The problem that we have is that this is a highly-desired area, so we're going to grow. The question is, how do we grow correctly? And so for those of you that are familiar with that northern highway 401, just as you're entering Fuquay Varina, it's a very densely traveled road. I believe a traffic analysis was done about three years ago, right at the intersection of Piney Grove and Highway 401, there was 22,000 vehicles that went through there. I own the Piney Grove, Piney Grove Storage Facility right there in, at that intersection. And what we've learned over the last year is, one, we want to, we want to always make something that looks nice and people can be proud of. So I believe that we've done that. If you're familiar with the little wagon that we have out there in landscaping and the nice architectural and fencing, that's the type of facility that we, that we promote. But one thing we have learned is that, one, within about seven months, we were 100% fully occupied with the waiting list. And then also over the course of the last year, we haven't been seeing a lot of different storage facilities going in around us, but there has been a lot of higher density, I'm going to call it higher because I know it's not really, you know, high density, but higher-density housing communities that don't have any extra storage, they can't have boat and RV storage. So eventually that's going to come in somewhere. The question is, where and how is it going to look, and is it something that we can be proud of? So at the last meeting, as Sarah mentioned, there was one of the neighbors that came in and talked. So what I actually did is I actually held, held a meeting up at the Aviator, we rented the space out, just to present to them, all the neighbors of what exactly we were going to be having there. And I pulled up a draft plan and said, "This is what type of facility that we're going to be having, this is the type of landscaping." And I just sort of shut up and I just let them talk and ask questions. So we did that for about two hours and I think it turned out to be a very good meeting. After the meeting, I know before that, I know there was a lot of neighbors that were very concerned with it. I received multiple phone calls from, from many of the neighbors saying, "Hey, you know what? I was against it before, but based on everything that you said, we're for it." And I can actually bring up a text message from one of the neighbors where he said, "Hey, listen, you know, this is the type of," he said, "It sounds like you're the type neighbor that we want and this is the type of facility that we want." And I also have, and if I'm allowed, I have some other local recommendations from some of the businesses that have queried me over the last year saying, "Hey, this is the type of stuff that we want." So we're not looking at just doing a storage facility there. I know this is only for rezoning, but I want you, want to present the purpose of why. But over the last year, not only is there a high demand for storage, but also for contractor flex space and that's what we're doing. We're having a, like a contractor flex space where people just can come in, stage their materials, stage their offices. We've had a lot of contractors that they just need a place to bring their customers in, lay out the blueprint, say, "Hey, this is what we have." So we'll have some contractor flex space, we'll have some, some coworking space, so you rent an office, use a conference room area. We'll have a RV or camper, RV camper repair shop. So it's sort of like a one-stop shop. We're going to have some covered boat and RV storage, also some, some storage in theirs. But the intent is just to have a very nice-looking facility that everybody can be proud of. So, and I'll, I'll just leave it at that. May I? And then just one last thing, I probably should have handed this out at the same time as well. Based on what some of the comments were last time, I also have three more pieces of paper. So this next setup, Pedro, that you're, that you're going to have, I know Sarah did show the, from his, from the Harnett County GIS with the different zonings. So I just wanted to zoom down a little bit and showed some of the additional ones. So we are, so, you know, we're .18 miles from a commercial property on the north, we're .13 from Piney Grove Storage as well as a medical, it's like, I think it's an elderly care facility. We are .46 miles from the rezoning of the Rebels property, which is going to be a business park of some sort. And then so the property that we're talking about now, it's that, in that light blue. The second two papers, I actually own a GIS company, so I had my team go out and flew some, we did some collection with LiDAR. And so just addressing one of the comments that we had last time, I just had some of my analysts, I said, "Hey, can you do a quick hydraulic model on this just to show that, you know, there is no, there should be no concern about any of our runoff hitting that subdivision back behind us." So, you know, both, both pages, depending on which one you want to look at, we've modeled the hydrology there, show that they don't have anything to concern about with any of the water runoff.
Mr. Chairman? Okay, you're right there at the intersection. You've got many storage there now. There used to be an old nursing home across the street over there. There's some other stuff in the area. I mean, for the most part, it's a mixed-use community already, so I would make the motion to approve.
Well, you still have to finish the hearing.
I still have the floor open for both of you.
That's fine. When the time comes, I'll make the motion.
Would anybody else like to speak in regards to this proposed zoning change?
I'd like to know if it's in a flood zone, any of it, is it all good as far as the property? I don't think we should be building in any flood areas anymore. We don't know when the next big storm is coming. And I like land that is in flood zones to be put aside as parks and other things where you don't have people living. And I'd like to see that we have the capacity, I'd like to see us have a master plan so that when you're doing your zoning and stuff, it's for the development of the area to the capacity in which you can maintain it. You have problems with water, you have problems with sewage. And I'd like to see slower development in general until you have a plan to make this a livable place. I come from New York, I've been to all over the country. Leavitt used to build the houses in some of the areas I've been to, it's been a disaster. And it's those disasters that I'm thinking about that you do want to repeat, that may be slowing down the development or making it a little less impact in the area would be a better thing. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I understood correctly, this is not going to be houses.
No, it's going from residential to commercial.
Commercial units. And one thing that Mr. Moore said, he's going to have flexible office space, I believe, which is something that is poorly in this county, especially in Northwest Harnett. So I think I can go along with what he said.
Would anybody else like to speak in regards to this proposed zoning change? At this time, I will close the floor for the proposed hearing for the zoning change.
Chairman, I make the motion that we approve this zoning change from RA 30 to commercial.
Next. I have a motion and a second in order to, pardon me, I have a motion and a second in order to approve the zoning change for Plan 2303 from RA 30 to commercial zoning. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved unanimously, Madam Clerk. Move on to item 10, public hearing for proposed zoning change, Plan 2303, triple zero two.
All right, thank you, commissioners. So the applicant for this case is Forest Ridge Subdivision Incorporated, and what they're requesting tonight is a rezoning from the RA 20R, a residential zoning district, to commercial. So they're, they're requesting a partial zoning change, 16.1 acres of a 29.8 acre property, which is located at NC 2487 in Melody Lane, it's in the Anderson Creek Township. The site is currently undeveloped land, which consists of three non-contiguous sections, they're separated by NC 2487. The area included in the requested rezoning is in, within the, the red outlined area within the, the blue, so the blue outline being the property and that red area, the requested rezone. The surrounding land uses consist of single-family homes, undeveloped land, various non-residential land uses, which include a restaurant and gas station in the, in the immediate vicinity. So the property does currently have split zoning, so there is a small portion of this property, which is already zoned commercial, that would be the area sort of within the, the red outline and in between the blue there in the section to be rezoned. Just shown a little bit better on, on the next map, and I'll make sure to call your attention to it there. The property is located within the Highway 87, Highway Corridor or Overlay District, and it is a part of Forest Ridge Plan Unit Development. Services available for the property include county water and county sewer. The traffic counts for NC 2487 for this section are 41,000 daily trips. Site distances from the site are described as good. So here, the zoning map, it shows two things, you can see the area of the property that's already zoned commercial that I was speaking about, and then also too, the proximity of commercial, commercially-zoned properties here in the area. On the land use classification map, you can take a look and see that the property is located within the compact mixed-use land use, which is completely compatible with a zoning, a commercial zoning designation, excuse me. Been photos provided for your review of the site from staff's site visit. Melody, the view from Melody Lane there, and then as you go down, there's the view across from NC 2487. Through staff's evaluation, staff found that the impact on the adjacent property owners in the surrounding community is reasonable, as there are several non-residential uses in the area. Staff found that the requested zoning district is compatible with the existing land use classification. Staff found that the requested zoning would maintain the public health, safety, and general welfare. The uses permitted in the requested rezoning are compatible with the surrounding non-residential uses in the area, as well as the Highway 87 Corridor Overlay District. Staff found that due to the compatibility of the requested zoning in the land use classification, as well as the NC 87 Highway Corridor Overlay District, the requested not, did not require an evaluation for a small-scale rezoning. Based on the evaluation, staff recommends approval of the requested rezone. At the May 1st, Harnett County Planning Board, the board voted four to one to recommend approval of the rezoning due to the compatibility with the land use plan and the existing non-residential zone parcels in the area. The planning board members did want to mention that they had concerns that the section of NC 2487 requires better traffic enforcement in order to promote highway safety. One area resident did speak with concerns relating to traffic's safety, as well as congestion along Melody Lane, in the existing and potential storm-water runoff issues. And staff has now opened for any questions, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Questions, comments? At this time, I'll now open the floor for the public hearing for the proposed zoning change, Plan 2303-dash-triple-zero-two. If anybody would like to speak in regards to this proposed zoning change, now is your time.
My name is Jeremy Garcia, I live at 102 Melody Lane. If you would go back to those pictures, of course, in the original application, you see there's a bunch of green and forest, that doesn't exist anymore. If you were to continue a little bit further south, less than a mile, we live next to the Walmart on 87. You would think that that's convenient, except for the 17 accidents that happen at that intersection every day. And you would think living next to the Twisted Grape would be super awesome, but it's not, especially on Wednesdays. But because they removed that turnout that used to be on 87, that has considerably changed the traffic pattern. So now, not only is our street a drag strip, but because it is, there's an accident at least once a day in front of our house. There's also an accident right up the street at the AutoZone, literally, every day. But that's not even the biggest problem. The biggest problem came because where the Twisted Grape is, there used to be trees. Directly behind our house, there used to be trees. And in across from us, there used to be trees. That created a buffer. In 2017, 2018, the two back-to-back hurricanes, since we were on the north side of the eye, our house got flooded, whereas it probably would have been a little bit less damage had all of those things not been there anymore. Not to say that 87 isn't great now that it's four lanes, but everything that's happening in that area is destroying the area. And not also, if you go just further north past this blue area that they're talking about rezoning, that fence line, that's Lyndon Oaks. So we also have to contest with that. So there's a lot that they want to do, and it's great, and I get that, progress happens. But the more they do, the more it's ruining our area. And you go less than half a mile through those woods, you run into a massive homeless encampment directly next to the Walmart right there on 87. So what are they going to do about that? Now there's a clear-cut path to the Walmart for all of those individuals. I hope they need help in life, but now all they have to do is continue to cut through the woods, and now there's a business directly in front of my house. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Good afternoon, all commissioners, hold it. My name is Camilo Queso, I am a resident of that area, I live in 34 Dry Springs Court. It is the first cul-de-sac on the left side of the map. And my concerns, along with that of other of the neighbors, is similar to his concerns. We have, the increased traffic will be unsafe, we believe it will be unsafe because of the only exit that we have in that community is Melody Lane. And bringing commercial property like a gas station and other strip malls will increase the traffic into the only way we have out. I lived there since 2019. I have seen many accidents in that intersection of Melody Lane and 87, due to the lack of a merge lane, as well as a traffic light, and the recent changes to the middle of the road where we turn left into our community. As I was, as I was buying that property in 2019, one of my neighbors lost her son due to a traffic accident on 87. Unfortunately, she cannot be here, and this is probably too much for her. But people are speeding on the two lanes closest to the Melody Lane. They're using whatever merge lane is in there to pass, including that in front of the Twisted Grape. And until they realize that lane ends, and then they hit whatever car might be standing at that stop sign, because we don't have a light. So therefore, the accidents. I have seen the school bus struggle to get out of there, again, because we don't have a merge lane or a traffic light. I myself have, have almost been involved in like three accidents for the same reason. We do have flooding problem as well, I'm sorry I'm all over the place, but a lot of things are happening. We do have flooding problems as well on that cul-de-sac. There is sewer that goes underneath the street that gets backed up as well, closer to the bottom port, the bottom corner of the area that's getting rezoned. That water is going there, I'm not sure where it goes from there, but that's where it's going. So going back to page number five of the staff report, where it says, the proposal, the proposal enhances or maintains the public safety, health, safety, and general welfare of, of our community. I will disagree with that unless the proper authorities, to include North Carolina DOT and the planning board, take into consideration all the issues that are ongoing right now with people not following the law, speeding above the speed limit, upgrade of the sewer system by Harnett County in our area. We do have, like I said, we do have a flooding problem, and just, just enforcing the law. And I, I do welcome development in our community, it brings tax, taxes, it brings things for us to do. But I will have to disagree with that unless everyone has taken proper measures to lessen the negative impact in, in our community. As I said, the pa, the pattern of the commercial traffic, traffic light, expanding that section so we can exit safely, to include the school bus. I mean, I don't want to take more of your time, but that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Got a question real quick for staff, is Mark in here? Are they going to have to do a D cell lane or turning lane, making this commercial and go for an ingress and egress off of 87? Or are they trying to do this ingress egress off of Melody? Right there, you know, where you come out of the grade.
It would just depend on whatever they decide to put on it. That's what I always try to remind all the board members is, at this point, at a rezoning, you need to consider everything that can be had, that can be placed in a commercial zoning district, not just what the applicant says, or what he comes up here and says, because all that can change. And so you certainly should take into consideration issues like traffic and the road and all those things, but understand that, that how it could be something that, that doesn't require any traffic at all, you know, that.
My question is, are they going to have another ingress and egress on the 87, or is there only ingress and egress going to be on Melody Lane?
I, it would be my best guess that they would be able to have a ride-in, ride-out onto 87, and then everything would funnel back to Melody Lane, where they could have anything from a traffic light to double, double access or something like that, to something more extensive.
I mean, because you know, I mean, we've already had extensive talks right there on that area, so.
I, I am very familiar with the traffic issues and certainly sympathize with everything that the folks are saying tonight, they're absolutely right. Hey, Highway 87, especially at Nursery Road and, and Highway 87 is an issue, and thankfully help is on the way, as you are aware, for that intersection. We can only hope that whatever is put there, that DOT does the right thing as they go through their process and require that the developer or whoever, whatever they place out there is, does a good enough job to make sure that, that the impacts are lower when it comes to traffic for that area. But it's certainly an issue, I understand.
Good evening, I'm Rita Rice, I live at 102 Melody Lane. I have lived out there since February 1994. I've watched as all the trees have gone away, I have watched it become a four lane, I've watched us as we have expanded and grown. Change is going to happen, it's inevitable. Just as my neighbors have said, and my husband, the concern is for the increase in traffic, they said 41,000 hits a day, you know? And then we've got Lyndon Oaks behind us, the military housing, and everybody rushing to get to Fort Bragg. We do see accidents on a regular basis right there. We do need a traffic light. We've also seen with this expansion, a lot more crime. Since I have lived there in 1994, I never used to have to lock my door, I never had to worry about leaving property outside. My house has been broken into twice now, and I've had things taken out of my yard. What's going to happen as we continue to expand to give us more law enforcement on that side of town? And what's going to give us more emergency vehicles to wind up helping these people instead of the neighbors having to rush out to be the first responders on an accident? So change is going to happen. My concern is, again, for that traffic flow, for those traffic lights, for more law enforcement to take care of the growth that's happening on this side of the county. And again, we do have, also, there is still flooding issues. I know that the developers have been out there many times over the years to try to work with some of that, as some of the roads started washing out. But that is one of the things that does need to be considered, with all those trees being gone. We've got like a little lake that runs through our backyard, down into the neighborhood. And as one of the other neighbors said, with all that traffic on Highway 87, you know, how many more young people have to get killed that are walking on the side of the road trying to go home after work? So I would ask that the board please take this into consideration. Make it a safer community if we're going to grow, and also make sure that you're bringing something that brings quality of life to our citizens. Thank you.
Again, Yvette Watson, 1082 Melody Lane, and my concern is safety as well. All the traffic, all the accidents that do happen. All the traffic, all the, um, accidents that do happen there. The way, um, I don't know if everybody's familiar with how, uh, the turn into Melody Lane is, but they kinda brought a little curve in, in it and we're getting ready to enter into a turn when you go to Melody Lane. So you pass Melody, you enter into a turn and go into, um, Walmart. And then Twisted Grape is right here. Everybody kinda speeds, you know, people try to slow down and make that turn into Melody Lane. But then again, like they said, so many people come through there, they speed through there. I've been there so many times where they come, they use that lane as a passing lane. They jet up in front and they're cutting off people and killing people literally right there at the beginning of our street as we're trying to sit there and wait to come out. And because there's no traffic light, then you're a sitting duck because people are speeding through there and you can't turn because the traffic is so heavy coming out of there. So that is such a danger. And then we have so many young people there now. We have a lot of kids and there's a lot of traffic coming in and people are starting to come all the way and speed through that neighborhood all the way down. Melody Lane kinda goes straight, then it's a stop sign and it goes straight back. We have a lot of people that are coming through down there now, probably drinking or whatever after is what it seems like, maybe after being there and hanging out at the Twisted Grape. They come through then they come speeding through there and they come back. And it's not just in the evenings, it's in the afternoons. And we have the kids that play in the streets. And I can't tell you how many homes actually have those signs out there telling you to slow down these children. And so many people have had to remove their little kids out the street. We wanna try and keep that space in that area safe. And then the bigger concern even as they talked about the homeless, right? So, when you tear that down and you make that opening, there's gonna, even if they, if they have another come, opening coming through into Melody Lane, that means you're gonna open up another, um, avenue for the homeless to easily walk through and hit this neighborhood that's safe and for the kids that are out there playing that, you know, kids can disappear. Um, so, we would really like a lot more attention to be paid if they're going to do, like she said, change is gonna come. But it, it can't and it shouldn't come at the cost of the community members and the children that moved there because of the safety and the, um, enjoyment. Melody Lane is a dead end. There's no reason for people to come all the way back there. It kinda dead ends at right past where Melody Lane ends and then, I mean, kinda stops and turns. And then it's, when you go all the way to the end, it's also a dead end. And the last piece also deads in down at the lake. So there's no reason for that extreme increase in the danger that it proposes to the children. So, some definitely things have to change, lights and, um, my concern also is what type of, what type of businesses are gonna go there, commercial? Commercial is, is, it's gonna happen, like she said, but what else is gonna come there? We heard that it's possibly a gas station. We have two gas stations right there. There's big sheets right across the street, literally right around the turn, there's Walmart, there's another gas station. And then not even a mile up the street on the left, there's another gas station. We really don't need another gas station. So looking at what type of, um, what type of businesses will come there? And will they actually add quality or detract again, more from the community there? Thank you.
Question, ma'am?
Yes.
So, I mean, I'm very familiar with that whole area and that traffic intersection and you're exactly right. People use that as a third lane and then have to get over. And if you're pulling out and you think someone's decelerating the turn down Melody, getting hit, pulling out. Traffic or the traffic signal is definitely needed there, but that's not something that you can take into account at this point in time. We can always hope for that in the future and that's always gonna help out that, that neighborhood. However, it's currently residential. RA twenty.
And it's actually, they put a turn in there.
RA twenty R, okay. So, you can fit probably what, twenty some houses on that, sixty acres, a little more maybe? Maybe? So, what, what do you think about twenty some more houses there or a gas station? Or at, uh, you know, some commercial, something that's gonna go there that's gonna be, I mean, it's gonna be more homes, more cars all turning down there, constantly living there. It'd be, probably be less traffic right there, however pulling out.
Depending on what goes there. I don't, I don't know what the solution is. Um, the trees and stuff are gone, so all that protection, um, in terms of, uh, reducing, um, water flow and all that stuff and sheltering people's homes, it's gone. So, I mean, we can't do anything about that, right? But just, I don't know what the solution is. It is their property. Um, putting homes there, that adds a whole nother avenue. But is it more dangerous? What types of homes are gonna go there, right? So, um, I don't have the solution. I just think that it, more things need to happen to keep the residents safe that are there. So, the planning has to take into account other resources, right? Growth is gonna happen, but you can't just say, oh, we can do all this stuff and then not think about and really plan for the negative effects and try to minimize them for the residents that are currently there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Ma'am, I understood several of y'all make mention to a homeless encampment. So, has anybody contacted Sheriff's Office on that yet? I'm assuming nobody has. Would you make that call for him in the morning?
Yes, sir.
So, you, you would ask a question about whether or not houses can be there or whatever? Regardless of whatever goes there? I know we live on the south end of the zip code and I get it. But we have to have a significant increase in law enforcement. Regardless if it's Harnett County or Joint Task Force in Harnett County, Spring Lake, the MPs, whatever. The, the, the main source of the problem as far as like the crime increase are actually on the western side, western side of eighty-seven. So, a few months back while we weren't there, uh, there was a young man who broke into a car, stolen AR fifteen out of the backseat, decided to travel into our neighborhood. And there was this massive scene where people were sending us pictures about with Harnett County dogs chasing this person and it turned out to be two. So, they took an avenue approach directly across the highway through the Twisted Grape. That was right next to the Twisted Grape, our house. Then went through our backyard and traveled into the neighborhood further after that. As far as your question about the, the homeless encampment, yes. That's the thing.
Manager's gonna make the call for you in the morning.
So, but the thing is, is that the accidents happen literally every day, sometimes two, three, four times a day. But it's always acting in fact. And I know that the law enforcement for Harnett County is spread thin. We're a weirdly shaped county. But it's always acting in fact where they show up. And Highway eighty-seven itself has turned into the enemy by now. It is, it is awful. Even if you want to risk trying to stay with traffic and just to be able to stay safely with traffic minimum, people are doing seventy. And then once you get a little bit further north, you go past, uh, right there at Nursery, it's game on. Sometimes they're getting hundred, hundred twenty miles an hour just to go literally less than a mile, mile and a half, depending on which side that they're turning. There's no, there's no law enforcement on that court. You might as well be on ninety-five.
Can, can I bring this back to topic real quick?
Yes.
You know, so, I'm hearing a lot of law enforcement issues and traffic and I'm not gonna argue with that, that all down there. Right now, we're discussing the rezoning of this property from residential to commercial and that's the, the decision here. You know, so, and it's tricky because I understand and hear all your concerns and I'm right there with you. However, eighty-seven is growing big time, especially with commercial. And we're trying to incorporate and bring more things for us to have down there. Cause we really don't have anything. You got three restaurants and, you know, if you're not eating at the Twisted Grape, then you only got a couple of other ones to choose from, so. Yep, and it's, um, it's, that's what we're up here trying to lay and figure out exactly what the best lane use is gonna be and for the future. I understand the traffic and that's nothing that I, you know, I can make the decision on right now and, um, can work in order to, you know, help that out in the future. I mean, we constantly are doing things with DOT all the time and that eighty-seven corridor, that's my baby. So, I'm, I'm working on it. So, as far as residential to commercial, what are, what are the qualms over that?
Uh, I think the main thing is that it's going to increase the amount of danger that our neighborhood specifically is in. The, the fact that people do use those turning lanes as passing, they pass and they jump over. That's one of the biggest things. But everything that's happening now, just in our short amount of span, is now going to increase right there. And where we live, literally on the corner, that's where it's gonna start. And then as it increases in size and more things and more stuff, it's gonna trickle down onto the backside of the neighborhood. When you go down Melody Lane, it just, there was, there's a lot of houses that are always there. And then there's been an increase in houses. We didn't have kids in our neighborhood in years. But now we finally have children back in our neighborhood. We just got traffic signs for a small neighborhood that's less than five miles in depth and wanted to be thirty-five miles an hour. Thirty-five miles an hour is enough to seriously, seriously harm or kill someone. But the more you could in such a small, compact area, the more danger our area and we are in. And I do not, we don't even let my granddaughter go out front. There's too much of a risk if somebody flying down our road. Can't even have her go near the Twisted Grape because as soon as they're in Twisted Grape, they're turning and going about seventy-five miles an hour in about twenty-foot distance. So we can't, we have to localize our kids now to one small area at a time.
So, so the question is residential, commercial? I would say residential. Residential will still bring us more quality of life. Commercial's gonna bring more traffic, more opportunity for issues, uh, and more crime. I would say residential and some more programs to make quality of life better for our community. Thank you.
Anybody else speak in regards to this public hearing?
I, I will just make it plainer. Residential or commercial is a law enforcement crime issue. You help them feel safe and continue to pursue happiness in their residence and in their life. They don't wanna die. That's why they want residential. If you want them to live, fix their law enforcement, replace that sheriff and have your commercial because you'll have law enforcement. That's what they're telling you. They wanna live and not die. Don't kill them. Replace the sheriff, give them law enforcement, have your commercial.
Please keep it on topic. We're having rezoning.
This rezoning is
All right, Alan Logman, two thirty-four Hamilton Road in Barn Level. Uh, my thing is that people are gonna be traveling back and forth in all areas. So when you open up more places, it doesn't matter if it's on eighty's, you know, on this main road or the other main road, people are gonna be going back and forth. Yesterday, the power went out in Lillington and it was a free-for-all in the entire area. People racing and going through no traffic lights for very long periods of time. I've never seen anyone. At what point does law enforcement need to be able to do traffic to help the increased load on the roads? Thank you.
Can we please keep the topic to the rezoning?
Hi, Terry Charilla, eight oh-three Melody Lane. And I just moved here last July. Um, I bought my house sight unseen from another state. If I had seen the way that traffic is, I, I might have rethought moving in there. Um, I, it's to, just to touch on some of the things everybody else has said. I mean, there's been plenty of times that I'm sitting there trying to get out to go to work in the morning and I can't get out of that road because there's so much traffic coming down there. Um, occasionally I get out and I've actually not been able to get over to make the left turn, to do the U-turn. And I've had to go all the way down past Walmart to get to the light because there's so much traffic there. So I think to her point, um, for us, it would be more beneficial if they're gonna keep it to residential as opposed to a business because we don't know what the business is gonna be. If we had some kind of an idea, we may change our mind, but I, I don't think we need another gas station there. There's three gas stations within a, a mile and a half span. So if that's what it's gonna be, I say residential.
Sir? Yes, sir.
My name's Danny Cooper. I live on nine one five Melody Lane. I've been living there since nineteen ninety-four. I support the request to make this commercial. I've read, I live further back off the highway, so obviously I have a different viewpoint cause I live in the original neighborhood. But I've read the criteria, the evaluation. And I agree that it doesn't really have that much of an impact of the neighborhood. I agree that it does blend in with the other commercial property that's on Melody Lane. To solve the problems that's been brought up, so you can put a red light there. That's all you need to do. The next thing you do is make sure the egress and egress to the commercial property does not come into Melody Lane. Have it go off of eighty-seven, twenty-four eighty-seven. Regardless of what is there, make another turn lane and that'll fix that problem. More police, handle the police problem. That's not what we're here for. We're here for the rezoning of the property. So I support that. I don't have a problem with it. Believe it or not, I think Mr. Smith, I thought was gonna come in and say differently. I would like to say that, uh, on a rezoning effort, I wanna compliment Mr. Smith and his company because initially they was gonna put houses and apartment buildings back into the residential area years ago. That didn't happen. Now we got beautiful homes, single-family homes throughout the neighborhood, up front and all the way to the back, okay? So I, I support, I don't have a problem with it. The last thing I wanna say is with regards to the flooding, I don't know too much of the flooding issues to my neighborhood before. Nor do I, but I do know that when you go down Melody Lane and you make the initial right turn, it has always been Melody Lane, and you go around the curve, that used to be a serious flood area. We would have five, six, eight, ten feet of water in that area. I wanna compliment Mr. Ken Smith and his company, Odell Smith Corporation Plumbing, whatever you call it. I wanna compliment them because they spent almost a year of their time and effort, partly their expenditure, improving Melody Lane to handle that drainage. You're talking about good company for the neighborhood. They went above and beyond fixing that drainage problem. So I believe anything they put into this commercial area, they will take into consideration the neighbors in Melody Lane. But that's all I've got to say. Thank you for your time.
My name is Linda Williams. I live at one thousand seven Melody Lane and I was one of the first residents there. When I moved in, we were told we would be guaranteed, everybody in that subdivision would have one acre or more of land. When Odell Smith died, things changed. I know things would change with progress, but progress for this, this county. But I have to agree with them, it should be residential, not commercial. The reason why I'm saying residential, I walk every morning, every evening with my dog and I have to literally walk in somebody's yard just to get out of the way for somebody to run me over. It's not just that. I understand, uh, Danny is saying he would, the commercial, well, that's Odell, that's their, their property. But my thing is like they're saying up in the front, the, the crime going on. Yeah, I see the pictures coming on, on my phone about the crime. Where I stay, we don't have that much crime because everybody back there are old retired military. We're not gonna let that crime come back there. And another thing, I am tired of going up in the front and hearing people, I, I walk a lot and I hear a thing, the kids out there. The, I see the people coming and I've been back in the back and they're doing fifty miles an hour. That's a health hazard. That's a That's a safety hazard. The health mostly is because these kids, you gotta wave them down to say, hey, there's kids out here. I don't have any kids. My kids, like I said, I moved there in nineteen ninety-four. My kids are grown. I have grandkids now and they're grown. So I understand these people complaining about their kids, the safety on their kids. But if we have to go with commercial versus residential, I'm going residential. The reason why I'm going residential, I sit there this morning, I had a doctor's appointment. I know I have to leave at least forty-five minutes more to get to more regional because I can't get out of the subdivision. Once I turn into there, then I gotta sit and wait until the traffic slows down so I can, or that red light at Walmart so I can go up, up twenty-four to get to more regional hospital. I shouldn't have to do that. I shouldn't have to take two hours to get to a doctor's office. And it's getting ridiculous. The more progress that Hornet County wants, which is, is all, everything now is all about the dollar. I understand that, all about the dollar. And you go, Hornet County's gonna try to get the most money they can regardless of how people are getting, are dying. No one, Hornet County could care less because most of you all here, no one, none of you, none of you live out there in that subdivision. So you have no idea of what goes on. You're listening to us, but it's already in your mind, we gonna do what we want to do. And I think it's a shame. If you're supposed to be here for the people of Hornet County, be here for the people of Hornet County. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Thank you again. I know I already spoke, but I wanted to say is regardless of what goes in there, commercial or residential, I believe what we're all asking is, and our concern is for our safety, for our ability to get out of there, for our kids in that community. I am a military veteran. I survived three wars, three wars. And the last thing that I want is to worry about my safety on my backyard. That police chase that the gentleman, Mr. Garcia, I believe, mentioned, ended up on the back of my house. I have police officer behind my house and in front of my house. I know this is not, and this is probably not the place to take care of that, but I am sure you guys know the proper authorities that can address that and he can influence those people. So all we're asking is for you guys to consider our safety. I also know that Mr. Smith has no control over that and that's why we're here, to voice our concerns.
Would anybody else like to speak in regards? Yes, sir.
I'm Kenneth Smith, senior, and I'm one of the property owners of this corporation, this wanting to do the commercial. We've done the subdivision in there. I think in nineteen eighty-five, my parents bought that piece of land and they had it for several years. And then we did, we did a subdivision. It had safety tanks on it. The, I'm gonna go through the whole story. The safety tanks were on the land. Some of the lots would not perk because it was heavy gumbo clay type soil. So in the meantime, we couldn't sell any more lots in a certain part of it. We had wells, Hornet County come to us and wanted to tie into the water system out there. So we, you know, give them the water system and to provide water in there. We did away with our well on the property. Well, after that, my parents, my mother died, my dad died. Me and my brother and my two niece and nephews ended up inheriting this property. And we ended up coming to the county, getting a pud for the whole neighborhood. And in that time, we had some opposition from a lot of the homeowners out there. The Smith family has done whatever they could to fix the roads and anything else when we were out there developing and doing single-family lots. And as you all know, it ain't Spout Springs no more. It's a big corridor that goes from, you know, Greensboro to Myrtle Beach. And there's a lot of traffic on that road. We've done two traffic studies and we've had designs to go to the DOT. Now that'll be up to DOT to decide what they want in that specific corridor. We have partially, we know Hornet County planning wants back lateral access. They won't let us go so many entrances in off of eighty-seven. You've got to have one designed entrance coming in. That's why when we redid the neighborhood a long time ago, we put the median into place with dual lanes coming in, dual lanes going out for a traffic light at some time. So at this point, you know, we've got two parcels of land up there. We've got interest in some of it. I don't know and are not liberty to say what we're gonna do with the property. It may be medical, it may be residential, it may be something else. I mean, not residential, but, you know, retail, something of that nature in that area. So, you know, we're not, we can't say what's going there. There's another group, the Retsch and crowd here's got something behind us. They bought a piece so that they could add to the Twisted Grape's parking lot because it's not big enough for what they have now and they've got a piece that they have purchased from the Smith family. So I don't know if y'all have any questions for me. I'd be more than glad to answer what you got. But we've got a lot of traffic. I'm in the site development business and I fixed the roads in there. According to the county, wanted us to, you know, get the roads up to grade so the school buses would go back there. We did all that. The Linden Oaks had, they all talking about watershed. I've got pictures on my phone that I can't get DOT to fix the erosion that we've got coming out from under eighty-seven onto our property to this gentleman back here that keeps talking about getting flooded. I have called District Six twice and have turned it in. I got emails I've sent and they have not been out there yet from the Hornet County DOT to go down there and fix the erosion that's come out since they put in all the electrical loop for the sheet store. And I'm doing the construction on the place beside the sheets. I'm out there beside the highway doing work and it's tough with that traffic out there every day. All I can ask is get more state patrolmen out there every day and more sheriffs every day for this, you know, speed limit between Spring Lake and Sanford. But I, you know, I'm just not at liberty to say what we're gonna put in there because as you do commercial property, you've got all different kind of stuff that can come in. We just would like to have the land, you know, rezoned for commercial at this time. Y'all have any questions?
Questions? Questions, sir?
But we'll do all we can do for public safety, you know, as part of what we're willing to do with the DOT, you know, driveways and the lights and all that. When they developed that, what is it, not Linden Oaks, but Lexington plantation, they were supposed to carry that third lane all the way to Walmart. And Walmart wouldn't agree on it, you know, somewhere in that corridor and they ended up stopping at Melody Lane. Of course, you know, they're running off the road and jumping back on the highway. So thank you for listening to me.
Sir, thank you.
He's one of the engineers.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Kenneth Smith, junior. Thank you for your time tonight. And I know you guys have been put through the wringer on this and a few others. To kind of give you a little bit of a background, like Ms. Arbor had mentioned earlier, a portion of the property is already zoned commercial. The remainder is RA twenty R. All we're looking to do is just try to make it one contiguous commercial parcel at this point. It has natural features, wetlands on it. The wetlands cannot be disturbed. At this point, the intent is to leave the wetlands natural. It would serve as a buffer to isolate the residential properties. It would be a much more stringent buffer than what's required by Hornet County's UDO even. So you would be offering these homeowners a buffer of sorts, a much better buffer than just what's required by the UDO. As developers indicated, he can't really speak to what's going to go in there. We really don't even quite know. We've got a lot of interest from crowds that more or less have an idea of we might like this or what if that would work? We try to keep an open mind about it because we can't pigeonhole ourselves into just one little option here, it being commercial. That being said, we have gone about the proper methods thus far. We've spoken with DOT. DOT has indicated a failure on their part in order to put the appropriate signage for the deceleration lane that's there. They realize that. I think their intent, we can't make anybody do anything, but their intent is to try to put something there to help that traffic so people won't use it as a third lane to pass people. I'll admit, I've been out there before. I've been surveying the property. It's dangerous, I agree. But it should not be on the homeowners, it should not be on the developer. And quite honestly, I don't see it even on the Board of Commissioners to have to make that fix. That is a DOT and a Highway Patrol fix, if nothing else. I've seen guys do a hundred plus through there and they're right. It is dangerous. But you have to get people out there to actually enforce the speed limit, you know, and I completely agree with that. In going a little bit further, this parcel falls within Hornet County's Highway Corridor District and a good portion of that district overlaps onto the property. I want to say, and if Ms. Arbor can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's about five hundred foot from the center line over into the property. So all we're looking to do is try to stay with the intended land use more or less, which is the Highway Overlay District. A few other items to note as far as the hydrology and stormwater runoff goes. The developer took it upon himself when he upsized and fixed the road's culvert on Melody Lane at his expense, not just to just size it for the twenty-five-year storm event, nor just the fifty. He oversized a culvert for the hundred-year storm event. I don't know if any of you guys have familiarity with what NC DOT requires. They don't even require that on anything other than interstate. And he upsized that culvert to pass that storm event. That is a hundred and fifteen by seventy-eight inch culvert. It could have been just a fifty-four if he wanted it and just a circular pipe. Most developers don't take it upon themselves to do that sort of extra effort, but he did. He got it to DOT specs. They even asked for a few additional honeydews. Paved this, stabilized that. Can you fix this box that's up the way? Something that was built thirty-five plus years ago. And he took it upon himself to fix and they appreciated it and they accepted Melody Lane all the way to the back back there. If nothing else, I'm just trying to point out that the developer, he hasn't skimped on anything. He's took it upon himself to try to fix things above and beyond the minimum design criteria. So I'm not trying to get too passionate here, but I do see it as he has taken it upon himself to do the best he could for the community. We can't control the homeless population and I hate to hear that. It's a, it's a bad pandemic in this country and I see it a lot doing surveying myself. I've surveyed some areas that were a little, you know, overrun with homeless population. It's sad. I don't really know what the answer is there. As an engineer and a surveyor, I can't fix that problem. I do hope that we find a remedy for that. I do hope that the people find housing, if nothing else. I don't know, affordable housing, obviously not here, but, you know, for these individuals. But I mean, you know, the crime, the traffic, the homeless population, these are all concerns. But I don't think the developer seeking a rezoning from commercial or from residential to commercial is going to be affected by the homeless population, so to speak. If you've got homeless population, they'll go wherever they can to find someplace that's normally high and dry and they can get a handout, unfortunately. I do hate to hear that though and I am sorry for the residents of Melody Lane. I don't know if the commissioners have any questions at this point. We intend to honor every single development regulation that's required between NC DOT, Hornet Regional Water on the water and sewer, NCDQ on the erosion control and the stormwater runoff. But at this point in time, if you guys have any questions, DOT, like I said, they have spoken preliminarily with us. They have the desire to try to make an additional entrance up there, if nothing else. So, but until we come up with a site plan, we really don't know what that will be and we need a little bit further input from the people who are interested in the site. So.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions?
Did we cover twelve, ten and eleven in this conversation or because they're pretty much very close? And if we didn't, then I may be misunderstanding part of what, basically what I want to say, when you were asking a question about the zoning and what's a solution as we can sit and be talking. I think the best solution for, because we are lucky to be in the oldest area. But Melody Lane itself is a very family safe environment. And I think the best solution, because change is gonna come, is to somehow be able to put it in agreement to actually close off any egress using Melody Lane and whatever happens there. Just close that off, leave Melody Lane solid and bring the entrance and egress from the other side and just maybe put trees back along there. Leave Melody Lane as a residential itself outside of Twisty Grape's there. But if you leave that area kind of sound, it gives, restore some of that safety back to those residents in a very, because Melody Lane, when you go down, if you see the residential homes start really right after Twisty Grape. And those families have lost the protection. And we have to, we lost some of it because people are going in the back. But the kids, there's families, there's a lot of families, a lot of military families that are starting out and they're the ones with the children, little children that like to, they like to have them ride their bikes and their toys and stuff and they play out there and it's very dangerous for those kids. So if they do something to, whatever their decision is, it is gonna be what it is. But block that somehow, write into contract that that tree line gets restored there and cut off any entrance into that off of Melody Lane and bring it off to another egress so that Melody Lane stays safe for the young people.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. This is for Mr. Locklear or Mr. Sykes. The suggestion that this lady just made about requiring the developer to close off that egress, I believe you said, and put the trees back in. Is that not commercial, conditional zoning? And we don't have that authority in Hornet County at this time?
Absolutely. That, to do it at this stage, it would be conditional zoning.
And we can't.
And that can't be, you can't put a condition on the zoning.
Right.
Like, 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 even like we mentioned earlier, you don't know what the use is. So you don't know what you would have to do for that. Melody Lane's a public street, so NC DOT road. You're not blocking Melody Lane to do anything that DOT doesn't say you have to, you can do. So.
I have a question too. I want to know, how many of these people that are speaking tonight went to your meeting, planning board meeting? How many of these people were at the planning board meeting?
There's only, there's only one in opposition, of course, to the staff report, yes. So, so a lot more here tonight.
May I address that if you don't mind? The, the word didn't get back to us because all of the houses are closer to the property, which gave the notification from the technical. It was our good neighbor here passing out the word for all of us to live further back to be here for this. So that's why only one sort of a familiar.
Sorry, I'm talking a lot, but just something to bring up, based on what she was saying. What if we have an emergency and an ambulance is trying to get out? Somebody might die because that's the only way we have out. So somehow I think it should be considered, but perhaps. I'm not sure if we have to, if everyone has to talk to somebody else, but that is our own egress. And if we have an emergency, that vehicle might not be able to get out.
We don't have the authority for conditional zoning, period.
Anyone else speak?
Richard Vincent, one three zero Short Road, Pineos, North Carolina. I'm gonna fall on the sword in the next meeting, but I just wanted to make a comment here. So I don't know what the use is, but we did try and purchase this property from the Smiths. We weren't successful and they actually moved forward with another group. But I will say for the three or four months that we tried to... But I will say for the three or four months that we tried to negotiate with them, they kept badgering me on making sure whatever we did and whatever our intention was, was going to add to this community. And that, that is God's honest truth. Um, it was, we need something in community services, we need something that's going to add to the community, we want something that we're going to be proud of because we have our name on this. So I thought I would share that. Um, and then just from a development perspective, you know, you hear greedy developer chasing money. I'll tell you right now, if they were chasing money, they would go multifamily and be looking for a different kind of zoning tonight because that would be far more lucrative on what the property they got right now. So it's, it's not being driven by the dollar. Um, and then the last thing I'll say is as far as someone mentioned something about sewer capacity, uh, multifamily would be far more intensive on the system than commercial. So just to address that for maybe some of the folks that didn't know that, this use would be a lot more friendly to the sewer capacity concerns. And then that was it for this, the, the Moore County piece, um, uh, you mentioned the hospital. I live just across the street, there's a, there's a accident every day at that traffic circle and it's all because people don't drive the speed limit. That traffic circle is not designed for 55 miles an hour, but people do it. Same thing as this road. The highway is not designed for 75 miles an hour, it's designed for 55. And again, the theme that everyone is mentioning tonight is compliance. It's compliance, it's law enforcement. So not to get off topic, it is great to see, and I'm glad I've come to one of these, it's been years since I've been to one, this is how they're meant to work. This is a, this is actually, it's enjoyable to be back there and listen to people debating, peers, neighbors, people in the community. We've gotten so far from this in society right now, this is what we need. I'm originally from South Africa and every day I thank my lucky stripes that I'm, uh, live in America, American family, my wife's American, I've been here for 12 years and I thank God that I'm here. I've seen other countries all around the world and this is the greatest country on earth and we've, we've lost it. And to see everyone here talking the way it's meant to be, there's, there's more that unites us than divides us here. So whatever this outcome is, irrelevant, I just want to say that. I appreciate all these comments and the common thread here for everyone is this would be a whole lot safer community development and road if there was some code enforcement.
Would anybody further like to speak in regards to this proposed zoning change? At this time, I will now close the floor for, for the public hearing for the proposed zoning change. 2303 triple zero two. And I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I understand and have great sympathy for their complaints, but again, most of their complaints are related to traffic control, which the manager's going to, that and the homeless, the manager's going to refer that to Sheriff Morrow and to First Sergeant Hawkins over at Highway Patrol for the speeding issue. As to whether 25 houses are a shortstop or whatever, which one's going to generate more of, of an impact on the community, I don't see there's that much difference. I would make a motion that we support.
I have a motion for approval of the proposed zoning change.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the proposed zoning change for Plan 2303 triple zero two. Now I'll open the floor for discussion.
Well, I will start the session.
Yes.
My vote is no. I'm always for the safety of citizens. So my vote would be no.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would, I would say that I, I do, uh, I do appreciate the concerns of the homeowners and people who live in that community and are dealing with the issues that have been outlined for us tonight. But I would have to say that, uh, with regard to the requested rezoning from RA 20R to commercial, I would have to agree with the staff that I believe it is reasonable based on the proximity of already existing commercial, which is found there and the compatibility with our, uh, current land use plan. Uh, so I would have to, uh, I would have to vote in favor to approve it.
I would like to echo some of the same sentiments that, that Commissioner Matthews just did. Um, that, that we take a lot of things into consideration. The area is growing. It's a big time commercial area and that's trying, kind of what we're trying to, to push for down along that corridor. I understand that your neighborhood is directly behind it. Because a lot of neighborhoods are, I mean, Lexington Plantation is getting a, a, a nice storefront face there as well. Um, but that 87 corridor right along bordering it is, is outlined and laid out for that. I understand your concerns and I will let you know that I will personally look into it and address the traffic issues with DOT as I, I constantly am in that area. Um, and also encourage some more police force to be down there as well. Um, with that being said, I, I, I would have to go along with approving this as well. So all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Zoning change carries unanimously, Madam Clerk. We have one, pardon me. I will count, or I will ask for a re-vote. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Four to one, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Yes, at this point, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. We'll be back at 8:20 during recess.
After that short recess, I will call the meeting back to order and we will move on to item number 11, public hearing for proposed zoning change, Plan 2303-003.
All right, thank you commissioners. So our next one is a requested rezoning from the RA 20R to commercial. The applicant is 54 Melody Partners LLC. The property is a .92 acre property located on NC 2487 in the Anderson Creek Township. The subject property is currently vacant land that's used for additional parking for the restaurant on the adjacent property. A small portion of the property is currently zoned commercial. And this property is located within the Highway 87, Highway Corridor Overlay District. Surrounding land uses consist of commercial uses such as a restaurant, a gas station. There are single-family homes and undeveloped land. Utilities available to the site include public water and public sewer. And the annual average daily traffic counts for the section of NC 2487 are 41,000 daily trips. Site distances for the subject property can be described as good. If you take a look at the zoning district compatibility map there, you can see the small portion of the property that is already zoned commercial, as well as the adjacent properties zoned commercial in the vicinity. And the land use classification is compact mixed use. Land use segmentation, which is completely compatible with the, with commercial zoning district. Photos of the sites there provided for your review. And through staff's evaluations, staff found that the impact on the adjacent property owners in the surrounding community is reasonable, as there are several non-residential uses in the area. Staff found that the requested zoning district is compatible with the existing land use classification. Staff found that the requested zoning would maintain the public health safety and general welfare due to the existing commercial uses in the area, as well as the properties presence within the Highway 87 corridor overlay district. And staff found that the request to rezone the parcel to commercial is not a small-scale rezoning and doesn't need to be evaluated for such. And with that evaluation, staff did recommend approval for the rezoning. At the Harnett County Planning Board on May 1st, the board voted four to one to recommend approval for the rezoning due to the compatibility with the land use plan, as well as the existing non-residential uses in the area. The planning board members stated concerns about the, the traffic safety along the section of NC 2487. One citizen spoke in opposition with concerns related to traffic safety with congestion and speeding both being cited, as well as the existing and potential future stormwater issues. Staff is now open for any questions.
Can you roll back a couple of pictures to the backside of the building?
Absolutely.
Hold right there. Picture on the right-hand side is the backside of the twisted grape. Is that correct?
It's to the side of the twisted grape.
Okay.
Thank you.
They're already using this parcel for a parking lot, Dean?
Correct.
Currently, yes.
Unlikely that they would get a driveway permit to 87.
Um, that's, I mean, that's going to be evaluated in CDR tier, a site plan review.
Yeah, as close as it is to Melody Drive, it's unlikely, I would think. So more of those stories is probably going to be parking lot.
I mean, so it is your, and I'm so sorry, is your question about the use of the property or is it about the driveway?
No, I actually throw both at you. I'm sorry if I didn't make it clear, but it appears that that's what they want to do when it is making a parking lot.
Um, well, I mean, we could always call the applicant up, you know, to speak, to tell you if they have any ideas to how this property is going to be used. I think that they did mention some information about that in their, in their application. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Parking lot for business there or?
It's, it's a parking lot that's, or it's connected to the twisted grape through the side of their parking lot. You can see on this left picture, that is actually coming up from the front side towards 87, but the, it's the front side of Twisted Grape, and that goes up onto this parking lot that they have always parked cars there. I believe the previous owners of the Twisted Grape had acquired that property and have used it for parking. And then after they've sold it altogether, I believe this applicant is coming in and to rezone it themselves.
Rezone the parking lot for commercial, right?
The, the area they're using as a parking lot for commercial. I would assume that they would continue to use it for parking because they don't have much, but I'm sure once it's rezoned, they can do whatever they want with it then.
And that's correct, Commissioner Nicole, thank you. And then to, to Commissioner McCoy, so the applicant does state in the application that they're, they're anticipating urgent care here, as well as parking for the, for the twisted grape.
Any other questions for staff? Well, at this time, I will now open the floor for a public hearing for proposed zoning change, Plan 2303-003. Anybody would like to speak regards to this zoning change? Now is your time.
What I'm gonna say is kinda irrelevant, but it kinda shows what can happen in terms of if you're trying to make an area safe. If you went back and showed the outline of the pictures, can you go back a little bit more? I know, stop right there. So I know it's already been approved, right? There's nothing we can do about that. But if you look at that picture and you see how close that first home is that has kids in it to the highway that 87 has become, and that was the reason why we were trying to possibly say, we know it's gonna be rezoned, we know progress, but maybe keep Melody Lane as a residential area. If they actually made an entrance off the 87, traffic could come through there and impact Twisted Grape. From the other side, they could have had an entrance coming off the 87 for whatever they're gonna do commercial. They're left Melody Lane residential and allowed for these people that live in the front of our community to keep their children safe. It's just a comment I wanna make because my kids are grown, but I see those kids every day, little kids on their scooters, on their little toys. We turn off of there and we drive very slowly through there, but so many people that come into those businesses don't. And the houses are so close to those establishments. They're so close. Someone made a comment about Lexington Plantation, but when you turn in there, there's no residential homes right at the beginning of Lexington Plantation. You have to drive a ways back to see those residents, and those people have a little bit of shielding to protect their kids. But these people at the front of Melody Lane do not. That's it.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Richard Vincent, here on behalf of 54 Melody Lane, 54 Melody Partners LLC. Thank you, pardon. So we, we're really trying to fix something that we really shouldn't be in this situation. This should have been zoned commercial from the get-go. So it's split zoned between residential and commercial. So we already partially, a portion of it is zoned commercial, so we're trying to clean that up. It's never useful to have a split zone property. As far as a residential, it'd be a lot more concerning to build a house on it right now and have kids run out into 87. So obviously, it just common sense, it, it's not a residential lot. It, it was always planned to be a commercial property. We haven't owned the property long enough, and I don't have the history of it of why it was never fully commercially zoned. We are under an NDA or confidentiality agreement to share the user, but in the sake of transparency, I absolutely can share the use. So it's planned, it wasn't planned to be a, a small urgent care medical clinic. We originally, when we purchased the Twisted Grape, we, we saw an issue. We saw that there was overflow parking. We saw that the staff parked on this lot, that there was insufficient parking on the actual Twisted Grape restaurant. And I think that was created several years ago when they did a patio expansion on the Twisted Grape. And I think what they did was potentially remove some parking spaces. So even though it meets current parking requirements, if you go there on a Friday or Saturday when it's busy, it, it does feel inadequate. It feels like there's not enough parking. So we guesstimated somewhere around 10 to 12 spots with additional parking is what we would need. There's nowhere on site on the Twisted Grape property to have and accommodate those additional parking spaces. So we reluctantly, but were forced into, really to protect the Twisted Grape, purchased the lot next door. And, and we purchased that from the Smiths, and they were great to work with. At that time, there were, really were no plans. Our plan, long range, was, well, let's leave it as it is. It's, for the most part, almost impervious. There's stone, blue stone, asphalt, there's screenings, it's hardpan, it's kinda been compacted and stabilized over the years. Why don't we just leave it be and we can continue the current parking situation? And then, over the last couple of months, we've had several folks reach out to us for a urgent care. We've actually had three folks reach out for an urgent care, and we selected the group that we felt would be the best fit. I will say, the way it lays out now, it, it's not, and I'm not gonna share an education, but maybe, maybe some folks will find it interesting on the development side. This lot does not lend itself to convenience. So you would not see a QSR, which would be a quick service restaurant. It's not gonna be a car wash. It just doesn't lend itself to that use because it doesn't have direct access of 87. And we, we'll leave that to DOT, but I could promise you, we're not gonna get access of 87. Number one, it would be incredibly unsafe to have multiple entry and exit points so close together. But it's, it's what we would call more of a destination use. It's a service use. You're not gonna drive by on 87 and immediately go, oh, I gotta go get that cup of coffee, I'm gonna pull in there. Because the entrance and access is secure. You've gotta go down Melody Lane, you've gotta loop around. So this is, it's a medical use, or it's a veterinary practice. It's a use where someone is intentionally going there specifically for that use, which is actually a good thing for this property. Because for .92 acres, you know, if it was a Starbucks or something like that, that would generate a whole lot of traffic. That's, that's not the intended use here. The intended use is a destination user, a service user, that we feel that would add to the community. The other thing is, we, we, just as the property owners in, in the development behind us, the residential, we have a vested interest to protect the restaurant next door. So we wanna make sure we're not bringing in a use there that is gonna compete, number one, with the Twisted Grape or hurt their operations, compete with the parking field. We don't want a user out there that's gonna have a heavy parking requirement overflowing to the Twisted Grape, and then we're gonna have enforcement issues, and we're gonna have to threaten to tow vehicles and get them out of the Twisted Grape parking lot. We also don't want a user there that's gonna compete with the hours of the Twisted Grape. And we felt like an urgent care would be a fantastic use where during the day, with common business hours, the Twisted Grape is slower, they don't do breakfast, it's not a big lunch, it's not a big lunch business, it's mainly evenings and weekends. And we felt like between the two of these, there's just a really nice balance between when the urgent care would be busy, it's not when we anticipate the Twisted Grape to be busy. The urgent care is planned, it's small, it's just a little bit larger than a new format Taco Bell, if you have that image in your mind. It's, I think it's 2,800 square feet. Although we haven't submitted any formal plans, we first needed to go through the zoning piece, which is what we're doing tonight. But that's small. And on medical, if you park that five to one, which would typically be your medical parking ratio, we're talking about 15 parking spaces or less. The reason we're doing that, and the reason we're not allowing a 6,000, 7,000 square foot medical building in here, and trying to maximize the space, is because when we originally acquired this property, we did it so that we can create additional parking for the Twisted Grape. So we see this medical, this, this urgent care going on half the property. And it would be on the, when you call it the northwestern side of the property, the top half of the property, leaving the other half where we could come back in the future and do a subdivision recombination, and then add that additional lot that we didn't develop, which is currently where folks that spill over from the Twisted Grape park, we could recombine that with the Twisted Grape like it should have always been. So happy to field any questions. I know, hopefully that helps some as far as the impact. We're not, we're not trying to bring something out here and maximize density. Again, our original intention was to assist the Twisted Grape restaurant next door. We can do that. And we've, we've worked really hard to find a user that we feel that will be low impact, low traffic generated. It's, it's, if you've got a 3,000 square foot building or less with two or three providers, you're talking 30 trips a day. That's it. 30 patients, 15 patients per provider. That's typically what these facilities run. That, that's about as low intensity commercial as we can do on this lot. And I'll come back to the original point, which was, we, we're fixing something that is not an ideal situation right now, which is a split zone property. And this was always, in my opinion, and looking back at this development, the way it was set up, the way the roads have already been stubbed and built, it was anticipated that this would be a commercial lot from the outset. Happy to field any questions and answer anything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? At this time, I will close the floor for the public hearing for proposed zoning change of Plan 2303-003. I will entertain a motion.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve, Plan 23-0003. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Here's your man, Mr. Mencler. All right, and our fourth and final proposed zoning change, Plan 2304-001.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, getting to board members. Jay Sykes with Development Services, as you stated, finalizing our, our items tonight for requested rezoning from RA 40 to RA 30. This is located in the Hector's Creek Township. It's a property is owned by Ms. Claudia Dove, Ms. Deborah Smith. The applicant is Madamy Holmes, represented by Mr. George Young tonight. Total parcel on both sides of Smiths Mill Road is 187 acres. Just looking at the south side tonight, which is about 141 acres. Property is mostly vacant, Disney Wood area, agricultural purposes in the area. It is a state that consists of two parcels that's split by Spence Mill Road, the section to the north. It's currently under development for about 20, 20 homes. And then the south is, is the portion that we're looking at that would be changed to RA 30. Single-family homes, agricultural uses, land clearing, and inert debris landfill is on Smiths Mill Road there, and then also lots of undeveloped land. Public water is in the area. Private septic would be utilized, as sewer is not on this side of 401. Of course, Smiths Mill Road is a, is a dead end road. There is no traffic count available, and site distances are good. Looking at the zoning district compatibility, you see it's all predominantly RA 40 there. So RA 30 would be there in the middle. And then the land use classification, it's mostly agricultural and rural residential, with a little bit of employment mixed use there, skirting the right side of it, as that swath is on both sides of 401. There's a few staff photos within your staff report, looking at the, the undeveloped agricultural land that's out there. To the evaluation, staff found that the impact of the surrounding community is unreasonable, as proposed rezoning could potentially be an inconvenience to adjacent property owners. RA 30 district could allow for higher density developments in the area. Limited road network and utilities could potentially not support higher density or a multifamily. RA 30, which is not adjacent to this tract, could also allow for a variety of uses that are not permitted in RA 40. Not permitted at all, even via a special use permit. The requested zoning is not compatible with the existing land use classification, as it's predominantly agricultural and rural residential. These classification is designed for agricultural and forestry uses, low-density residential development, looking at one unit per acre. The proposal does not enhance the public health and safety and general welfare due to the higher density development could lead to issues with existing transportation network, additional traffic congestion, additionally, public sewer service is not available in this area, public sewer, which obviously leads to lower density developments. And then due to the size of the parcel and its similarities, it does not need to be evaluated for a small-scale rezoning. Looking at additional information, in 2017, this tract was requested for the same RA 30 rezoning. The board of commissioners at that time voted four to one to deny the request based off of concerns from the residents as far as potential issues, traffic congestion, railroad crossing, the intersection of Spence Mill Road and 401, as well as school, school overcrowding being an issue. There is now a, a elementary school which is due to come online soon, which is in this area. So that could potentially alleviate some of those issues. Still looking at the traffic and railroad issues. And looking at the resident set and the more development in that area, staff concluded that the staff concluded, um, that, uh, the application should be denied based off of the land use plan as well as, um, the impact of the surrounding community. On May first, the Hornet County Planning Board voted four to one to recommend approval of the rezoning. Uh, the board discussed traffic issues on Spence Mill Road. Um, this being a water supply watershed area would, um, inevitably require it to be low density. Um, and then also, um, they also looked at just the RA thirty and RA forty being similar in residential nature and thought that it would be an inevitable that this development would occur. Um, so they, they voted in favor of the request. Uh, one said, one citizen did speak, uh, with, um, opposition and overall concerns of development in this area, including traffic and safety concerns. Staff is available for questions.
Mr. Sykes.
Yes, sir.
If it stayed RA thirty, how many lots would, would it have? Do you know off the top of your head? Would it be somewhere a hundred and fifteen or so?
Um, that's probably what I guess. Yes, sir. We don't, we didn't, based off of the, the water supply watershed and it being on septic, uh, yes, sir. Um, I think the applicant stated that due to their evaluation, they would be looking at a hundred versus a hundred and twenty.
Okay, twenty, twenty lots, that's the number I was looking for. That's assuming that his soils are suitable everywhere without the track.
Exactly right. Yeah, he may be elaborate on, on that. That's, that's typical, the, the difference.
So at two point two children per household, we're looking forty and some change and dividing that by a third for high school, middle school and elementary. We're talking about thirteen children per school.
The difference?
The difference, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Um, okay, well, that's, that's what I wanted to see, um, because I knew the schools have been, we've got a new elementary school coming online, but, uh, that's kind of where I was at with that part of it.
Okay.
And, and as you say, that, that soil in there, there could be some areas that are marginal. Um, I'm assuming they've done a screening on that and they may have some stuff they have to declinate and will reduce those number of lots.
Could very well, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, because that stuff has to be essentially in open space or unusable area.
Right, okay. Thank you, sir.
I have questions. Uh, you're saying that, uh, Ms. kind of, Ms. I'm a studio when you came or last week when you was talking about the board had denied in nineteen seventy, uh, when it was two thousand and seventeen?
Seventeen, yes, ma'am.
Two thousand and seventeen. The reason for the nine, it was the school being bored, uh, built there as well as the traffic in there.
Uh, well, at the time, the school wasn't even planned. So, yeah, they were just looking at, um, the schools in that, in that district being, um, overcrowded.
But there is a school being planned now.
Yes, ma'am.
In that area. Uh, I, as I said, uh, last week, I'm pretty much familiar with that area. And I do know that the traffic is coming from Fifth Way, Raleigh, Fifth Way coming down that Highway four oh one from three o'clock in the evening until past six o'clock is bumping above. And I know we can't do anything about, uh, the developers building houses, um, on the property, you know? That's already been planned. But I don't see that we should stack more houses on that property because of the traffic coming down four oh one, especially if a school is being planned in that area. The traffic is dangerous coming through there. I've been out there on several occasions, so I know. So, um, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, this time I will now open the floor for a public hearing for proposed zoning change, Plan twenty-three oh four dash triple zero one. Anybody that likes to speak, it's your time to do so.
Uh, Richard Chapman, fifty-two twenty, Christian Light Road. Uh, I don't have a dog in this fight. I'm not a, an adjacent property owner. I'm not a developer. I'm just a citizen. And, uh, after the last work session you folks had, uh, I got curious about this. And having never been on, uh, Spence Mill Road, I went out there and took a look at it, twice, um, including once yesterday. And it struck me as lunacy that we would place a development of a hundred-plus homes on a dead end whose only egress is to a road like four oh one. Four oh one is insane. Even, even yesterday, I went after church, uh, just to think of, just to see if the, the drivers on four oh one took a coffee break on Sunday for religious reasons. And, uh, they didn't. They were, there were plenty of them and they were speeding. At least there's a left-hand turn lane so you can get in there. Uh, but when you do, um, you find that it's frightening to try to turn left to get out of there. And if we have a hundred-plus homes there, that's gonna be a two, two cars per home. That's two hundred cars at rush hour in the morning, uh, in the evening, uh, just taking your kids to, uh, to school, going to the grocery store, whatever. Getting out of there is going to be horrendous, especially if you're trying to turn left across traffic. Uh, because you're, and that's where, that's where the jobs are. Left is towards Wake County. That's where people are gonna go in the morning. Um, I don't know what it takes to get a traffic light at an intersection like that. If we had a traffic light there, hallelujah, it's a great spot. I drove back there and it's a beautiful piece of property and I can understand why the people who live there now really enjoy it or appear to enjoy it. Um, it's beautiful and tranquil. Uh, and so it would make a, a wonderful project if we didn't have that issue with the intersection. There's a second intersection, there's a second problem that isn't being mentioned that pertains to this, and that's the railroad crossing. Uh, there's a DOT sign there that says rough crossing and they're not kidding. It really is a rough crossing. And, uh, if you have an increase in traffic going over that railroad track, um, it's gonna erode, it's gonna wear down, it's gonna damage your cars and it's gonna slow down traffic as well. So that's an obstacle. In the best of all worlds, we'd have a traffic light at four oh one and we'd have that road bed smoothed over and the road itself upgraded. The paving on Spence Mill is old and decrepit. Um, it's an agricultural road, roadway primarily or for limited residential use. So, uh, the, the rezoning is incidental when you're talking about twenty homes. The whole issue of whether there's a project there at all is really what's at hand here. And I don't know how we address that. Maybe we can't do that in this, this particular, uh, issue. But we have to have some way that we can. DOT needs to be prevailed upon. The railroad needs to be contacted upon so we can fix that problem. Um, and then thirdly, I, I'm distressed that you're considering overriding your staff. You've got a good staff here. They know what they're doing. They understand the plans, they understand planning, they do their homework. And when they recommend that something be denied, it's not of small weight. It's not of small consequence. I would think that that would have carried more weight with the planning board. I don't know why they voted for approval. I wish there had been somebody from the planning board here to explain that. Um, perhaps they had good reason. But if they did have good reason, they haven't shared it with the rest of us. Um, so anyway, that's it. As I say, I don't have a dog in this fight. Um, you know, what we have to do, we have to do. But it scares me because I think you put a hundred homes in there and people are gonna die without a traffic light. And I don't think anybody wants to be part of that. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening.
Hey, Bill. Josh Smith, ten ninety-one Spence Mill Road.
Love what you said.
I do have a dog in this fight. So like he said, traffic is an absolute nightmare. We leave at seven fifty in the morning, seven forty-five to take my son to school. I turn right, the wife turns left. Most time I turn right before she can ever turn left and she leaves ten minutes before me. Um, the railroad crossings are issue. Like the family's discussed, because I live out on the farm, you can't stop progress. You can't tell somebody what to do with their land, what not to do with their land. Would twenty more houses be a bigger issue than not? We don't, we don't know. Any house would be an issue. There's twelve houses on that road as of now. It's never been developed. This, it's been a farm since eighteen hundred. Ain't that when it stated back? Eighteen hundred. And it's, it's what it is, you know? Um, he pretty much said the majority of what I wanted to say. Um, traffic's the issue. Just overall, I think rezoning that opens up bigger issues, whether it be ten cars, twenty cars, fifty cars. Can they use all the land? We don't, we don't know. But any additional cars are gonna cause a problem. But, thank you.
Name is Al Longman, two thirty-four, Hamilton Road. The reason why I'm speaking is that there's some common sense and some lack of common sense. You keep doing things you just build upon and build upon what you're doing, greed. But the interest of the community is definitely not the interest you have. For instance, there are companies, a famous one was a German company, which was asked to do a city over by Cary, but the politics didn't support the money for them to build it. They're number one builder of communities in the world. Now, why aren't you learning how to build communities, having them look at what you're doing here, take a look at what they're doing, and you wouldn't have all these problems because you would have planned it and built upon what was already existed? You have them here, they built Cary. Cary's a wonderful place. So is Apex. They built them from scratch. You need to get better people making the decisions on what it is this community's gonna be in the future and plan and have them plan or pay for them to sit there and help you plan. A decent community that people will live here, twenty years down the road, aren't running away because of traffic and squall. Like in New York, you have a terrible, everybody left. Do you want everyone to leave here, leave nothing behind for their kids? Not a place to live? And that's where you're headed. You could have a built-up community. Cary's a wonderful community, but we're just using that as an example. There are people who do this for a living and plan communities. And you should be tapping them for your zoning and for all your infrastructure. It's a little late in the game now that you started, but I, I don't believe it's too late to get some benefit from that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is George Young. I'm with Madamy Holmes. Uh, we're based in Cary. I am a native of Raleigh. Um, we appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with you tonight. We have been building in Hornet County for quite some time, building and developing, uh, communities throughout. You may be familiar with, uh, our operation Coming Home that we just did at Providence Creek for Sergeant George Perez. I think some of you were in attendance. Uh, we are, uh, interested in rezoning this property. As Jay said, it is just the southern portion. The northern portion is not developed at this point. We haven't started. We're still going through, uh, but it's a by right zoning that we're looking at on that. And that would be twenty lots. I'm gonna speak specifically about some things that would typically be addressed in a conditional use, but just to give you some insight on, on kind of where we're going with it. So the southern portion with a hundred and forty acres, uh, the difference in density that we're talking about, we, with the soils as they stand, would be just under a hundred units. And right now, with the zoning that we're requesting, our plan with the soils being analyzed is a hundred and seventeen to a hundred and eighteen. We've got one little corner we gotta figure out, but it's not gonna be a greater density than that. So we're looking at an increase of, of twenty lots, roughly twenty lots, as we've spoken about. The, I think the staff report, and it's a great question, is why did the planning board overrule staff? I think a lot of the discussion was that the staff report called the vote from two thousand and seventeen as a precedent setting. And that was the, really, a, a lot of the basis for it. You still have some of the same conditions, but as you know, it is a different world, far different world today than it was in two thousand and seventeen. So the schools are built, are being built, being planned. There, that's not a big issue. Yes, traffic is still a concern. Uh, I'll address, you know, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chapman, I believe it was, said that he didn't have a dog in this fight. We, we do, we, we're researching, we've talked to the railroad company, talking to DOT. Those are things that we're going to address. The condition of the street on Spence Mill Road, yes, it's been a farm road for a long time. We'll comment in any damage that we do on that, improvements that have to be done. We're going to take care of that. So those are some of the things that we're gonna, we're gonna take care of. Um, you know, in terms of our conversations with neighbors, a lot of these folks have had this land in their families since it was King's Grant property. Our landowner is the exact same. It is the landowner that's had it in their family for a long time. They have chosen to sell the property. They chose us as the best partner to work with. We are not trying to jam medium or high density on this. And at some point, you know, as the county continues to develop, obviously you're gonna have sewer headed in that direction at some point. You, you ultimately have the potential for, for that. You have an employment corridor along four oh one that crosses over the, the railroad tracks. So we're looking at a low density, less than one unit per acre, which is right, in my opinion, in the wheelhouse of what should occur on this. You're not talking about a tremendous traffic increase, talking very few number of houses. You're talking about an opportunity to build something along four oh one to where people don't have to keep zipping down south of four oh one. They don't have to live further in, right? They have an opportunity to have a home closer to the jobs and not just drive through, right? So it's, you know, I, I know that not everybody's in favor of growth. I think most of the, most of the adjacent neighbors over there that we've spoken to agree that this is a very good use for this property. That, I think they're just, you know, they're accustomed to being there with it being the hunting preserve or, or fishing and, you know, in a rural lifestyle. They understand it's inevitable that development is coming. This development that we're proposing is not jamming a bunch of housing on top of them. We've had discussions with some of them about their lifelong use of the property over here that we're actually purchasing. We're willing to grant them access to the ponds over there that they grew up fishing in. Those are the types of things that we're willing to do and having these conversations with adjacent neighbors. And I think they respect that we've been open with that. I've shared our plan with them. Um, they're not, you know, doing backflips over development, but I think some of them feel that this is a, a very good use for, for what's ultimately gonna come over there. Um, I have Patty, uh, with McKim Creek, Patty Hilburn is here, our engineer. If anybody has any technical questions or if you'd like any additional information, um, from us, we're certainly happy to, to have those conversations and, um, you know, look forward to continuing conversations with neighbors regardless of which way, you know, they feel about the project. We're gonna continue to be transparent and open and share plans and, you know, be good neighbors. That's, that's what we do here in, in Hornet County. Yes, sir.
Do you know how many lots, if we didn't change it at all, you know how many lots you could generate a day by right?
My number on the south side is ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and if we change it to RA thirty, how many would you generate?
My number on the south side is one hundred and seventeen.
Okay.
So we're talking, we're talking twenty houses.
Okay. You have, have you already correlated that with your soil science report?
Yes, sir.
You feel solid about a hundred and seventeen or is there some to the question?
Um, they're, they're not in question on that. I mean, there may be one. There may be one on both.
That's what I'm trying to figure out is how many, were you gonna lose enough? That's what I'm trying to figure out is how many, were you going to lose enough to put you back down into 97 to 100 range where?
No, sir.
We'd be doing the same thing. You feel solid about that?
We're, we're 97 to, to 117.
Okay.
If it were a conditional use zoning, I'd stand here in front of you, tell you it'd be 117.
So we are talking about 20 more houses versus?
Yes, sir. And the north side, though not a part of this rezoning request and by right, part of what we're doing is the, is the low density by right zoning over there and preserving what's around the pond and doing a community gathering space over there. Yeah, something to allow our neighbors and, and other neighbors. It's a public road, and we're going to allow public comment space, you know, coming through there. So we, we want to, we want to do something that's good for, you know, for the county, good for the neighbors, good for everybody. And we, we appreciate your consideration.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? This time, I will now close the floor for the public hearing for the proposed zoning change of Plan 2304-001. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to remind everyone, and I understand the comments that have been made, but the land is zoned and there's going to be houses built. The question is, do we want to allow 97, or do we want to allow 117? But there's going to be houses built there. As far as the schools go, we have a school opening in August that will take part of those kids. I don't think 13 kids, 13 more at Harnett Central or Harnett Central Middle is going to cause a tremendous detrimental impact on those two schools. Yes, I agree with you. 401 is atrocious, okay? DOT has some, uh, plan improvements for 401. Unfortunately, Spence Mill Road at this time is not one of those. But we're just finding out they're going to build houses on Spence Mill Road. So that can change. As far as the improvements to the railroad, those will be required. Those are not, well, we think we might improve it. Those will be required. As far as upgrading the road itself, you're 100% correct. That road, that Spence Mill Road, like most of the roads in Northwest Harnett, Christian Light being a prime example, they were built in the 50s or before for farm equipment that was being used then, not the equipment that we have today. And they weren't built for the, all the subdivisions that have been built and will continue to be built. I just wanted to, to put that out there so that we know what we're, I want everybody to understand what we're voting on. We are voting on either 117 or 118 houses versus 97 houses. That being said, I make a motion that we approve the rezoning.
Motion to approve rezoning request. I have a motion and a second to approve Plan 2304-001. Motion and a second to approve Plan 2304-001. Sorry, it's getting late, everybody. Now I'll open the floor for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. Is it Mr. Young, is that right? Do you have any idea what your plan build-out time is?
Uh, we will start as soon as we're able to go through the CD process, which will be part of the review with Railroad DOT. Still, still having planning involved, but that would probably be on the, on the south side, six months, six more months before we, I think, would have permits on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And can I add one more thing? Uh, what concerns me more than the, the railroad track being a rough crossing, and it is, what concerns me more is what happens when that train stops at a multimodal, um, lay-down yard and sits there for a half hour and somebody that is living on that strip highway or that road needs an ambulance or a house is on fire and they need a fire truck, and you've got a train sitting there. That concerns me more than how rough the, the crossing is.
Any further comments, discussions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. I'll oppose?
I oppose, uh, because I know we can't stop growth, and I'm the only one up here voting a no. We can't stop growth. Now, I want to stop growth. But taking into consideration of a Tannet Grove intersection and, um, Rowes Church Road intersection there, the fact that we are building a school in that area, also the railroad crossing there. Uh, 20 more houses can make a big, huge difference. So that is my reason to vote against. Thank you.
All right, so at four to one, I'm going to call for a revote again by show of hands, by signifying aye. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Pass this four to one, Madam Clerk. All right. Moving on, public hearing on Harnett County's FY 2324 budget.
The county manager's recommended budget was presented on May the 1st. Since the budget presentation, our staff has been instructed to gather additional information on specific items. We intend to discuss any recommended changes to the proposed budget in greater detail during the upcoming budget work session, which is scheduled for May 30th. But to provide you with an overview of the budget, we have prepared a short video that summarizes the key strategic goals and county initiatives that we'll be focusing on in the next fiscal year. I apologize. I was hoping that was going to be a little bit louder, but the computer Ben said is, it's because of the sound on that. But when they came in from outside, it sounded really good in the hallway. So in the video presentation, we highlighted strategic goals and county initiatives that we plan to prioritize in fiscal year 24. The general fund operating budget totaled $156,923,960. Harnett Regional Waters Budget is $43,338,000. And Solid Waste is $8,789,000. We would like to note that we have not requested a property tax increase, but we do recommend various fees increases in animal services, parks and recreation, emergency services, health, and Harnett Regional Water. The budget allocates the highest funding categories to support strategic goals, specifically public safety, human services, and education. Central Carolina will receive a 4% increase over fiscal year 23, and Harnett County Schools receive an 8% increase over fiscal year 23. The budget prioritizes investment in the county's workforce by funding the recommended 5% market adjustment to all county positions and a 3% cost of living adjustment. The budget also includes funding nine new positions and three part-time positions to address the increased demands on county services. The budget includes funding to open up Ben Haven Branch Library, the Ben Haven Recreation Center, and funding is recommended to expand various parks, recreation, and library programs. The budget continues to prioritize investments in the county initiatives as in Greenway Development, broadband expansion, public safety vehicle replacements, IT renewal programs, and facility maintenance projects. We are available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments? Well, at this time, I will now open the floor for a public hearing regarding the Harnett County's 2324 budget.
Gentlemen and Mrs. McCoy, I'm glad you saved the best for last. I'd like to say three things about this budget. Number one is there has to be something in there to support small business grants. A lot of the small business owners stuck with Harnett County through COVID. They hang in there. They could have moved to other places and shut down and done something else, but they're committed to serving the people in Harnett County. So it would be nice if this budget could reflect some type of incentive to reward the small business owners on people who decide to open a small business, whether it's a restaurant or, you know, or, you know, consulting, whatever. They decided to open it in Harnett, just a, a token, one-time grant or, you know, tax deferment for a year like they used to, whatever. Just something to thank them for deciding to make Harnett County the best for their business. The other thing, number two, is before you continue to fund the debauchery that is the Sheriff's Department.
I apologize.
That's it. Before you continue.
I guess I should be home with this tablet.
To fund that, but please require some form of accountability. In doing all this paperwork, I found out that the county spent $21.5 million, including a state-of-the-art recording video system in the, for that jailhouse as it stands right now. And taxpayer money was wasted when Mr. Coats decided to turn off all the cameras. Those cameras weren't his personal property. That was put there with taxpayer money plus the mechanism to monitor and record. Wasting money, millions. There could have been other places that money would have been spent if they didn't want a video surveillance system. And the only time they didn't want a video surveillance system was after the death of Brandon Batey, among other incidences where people would request footage. And Mr. Coats doesn't want to produce any accountability for that department. So please consider putting conditions on receiving of certain items in his budget as for accountability. It's the least you can do. I read that in the environmental inspections, the jail, when Wayne Coats took it over, had environmental services infractions, just one. And the most recent, um, environmental inspection were up to nine. And when they give you infractions, these are nine critical things that could potentially lead to the shutting down. So we have gone down in that. You guys should ask for some kind of accountability from that particular department. Also, I saw in your budget that you included money for the Harnett County Economic Development Partnership. I think that's how it is mentioned. And, um, Mr. Trout is going to be your CNI person. I'd like, Mr. Trout, to please look. Harnett County Economic Development Partnership was registered by the county. This is at the North Carolina Secretary of State website. Registered by the county, if you tell them what date it was registered. It says August the 18th of 2022. I own the name Harnett County Economic Development Partnership. It was registered years before. It's a subsidiary of a nonprofit economic development corporation that I operate. And Harnett County went and just felt like they did with the Harnett Care's name that already belonged to someone else. They just went and put the name on their name. And you continue to operate on that. And all the attorney was looking for was how much it is worth to Harnett. Because, you know, Harnett County does not have an economic development entity to speak of for so long. But now we have a budget line item with a dollar amount attached to it. We will be pursuing legal ramifications for it? Or we are open for discussion if anything you feel is worth more than that $1 million to me? Thank you.
Could you come over there, please?
Um, certainly. I will, let's open this up one more time. North Carolina Secretary of State is where you go to register your business. You form a business, you go and register your business. I have registered that as a division of my business a year, like years before. I have registered that as a division of my business a year, like years before. Harnett County went and registered what is already not belonging to them. I'm not going to register at the state level. I registered here in Harnett County at the Register of Deeds. So I did all my due diligence paperwork. Instead of your staff attorney chasing you through your classes, you should have double-checked that those names are available, but they were busy. And as a result, Harnett County went and took the name of someone else's business and called it their own. Okay? Which is not right. With people, I said, if people decide to do business in this county, they shouldn't feel that at any time. I think the term I've heard it called is nationalized. They're going to nationalize your personal stuff because they want to use it. And that apparently is what happened. In fact, I think Mr. Wetherspoons Chair at that time, I think they've had meetings, they've appointed themselves presidents, they've gotten their folks together, and gave the public using a name they knew was not theirs. And you need to have a talk with the economic development $27,000 person? Name was not theirs. And it's not, it's wrong. It's wrong. And it can be righted. And it's not fair to those who, especially the minority, government, our women, and black in this county. So you can just imagine how hard it is to have anything that's not a daycare happening in this county. And for the county now to do that is... Yeah, it's Harnett County. You know, there's nothing I can be surprised. People get shot and killed here, you know, for not feeling well all the time. So it's whatever. But I know you will make it right. You'll make me whole. I'm open to discussion, I said. And now that you have a dollar amount, I'm very sure Harnett may receive a letter from the attorney to go ahead and get that sorted out. Because that was inappropriate. None of you paid attention to that. Nobody asked of these names, are you sure that this is available? They figured, what, I'm a black woman in Harnett. They can do whatever they feel like. Guess what?
Okay, we're going to get back on topic of the budget now. So would anybody else like to speak in regards?
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to instruct Mr. Pell to research this and have us an answer in the next day or two, please.
You should have. You did it.
But thank you for your comment, but we're moving on.
Would anybody else like to speak in regards to the public hearing for the FY 2324 budget? Ma'am, you can come up whenever.
Can I? My name is Alan Longman. I'm from 234 Hamilton Road in Bonneville. The reason is that you have all this money going to drug, which is great. What little do you have going to it? The problem I have is that the money that was spent in that department is questionable. And I don't know if you're going to get effective use of that money. That you have to have something oversee what's going on in there and if everything's executed correctly. You have money that's supposed to go to cars to have cameras in them, and all this money was given out and it's what, two cars that have cameras? You have money that was taken for cameras for surveillance of the jail system. And now they're not even being used. What happened to that money that was given to that purpose? The point is, I want the money to be spent properly. I'm very happy you have a program to build upon. But we also have to have the right people running it. And we also have to have some sort of third-person accounting of that money from that department. Because I don't trust the money that's already there should probably be ordered by the county or by the state. Thank you.
Sir, ma'am?
G'day, ma'am. We lowered this just a little bit. My name is Charity Barbie, and I am the Small Business Coordinator with the Harnett County Small Business Center. And we're one of 58 small business centers in the state of North Carolina. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak with you on behalf of Harnett County Small Businesses and for reviewing the flyer provided about our request for this evening. Does anyone need another copy of this or a copy of this?
I do.
I'm sure everybody has.
Right there. There it was.
I got it.
I'll keep this brief. Harnett County is one of the only areas in this region that does not offer an entrepreneurship launch program. In conjunction with our five county chambers of commerce and other partners in the community, we are here, and they were here earlier tonight, the chambers of commerce were here earlier tonight to show support. Harnett Small Business Center requests a county investment of 10,000 per calendar year for two grants for two winning small businesses as part of a new small business launch series offered via two series of classes offered twice a year. The key objectives of the new small business launch series, which there are several outlined on the flyer, but a few that I would just want to highlight include filling empty commercial spaces in our downtowns and retail corridors and hopefully opening more conversations with property owners about the opportunities they have and how we might support them in that endeavor. Preparing entrepreneurs to be successful owners and operators and filling market service and product vacancies or gaps in the Harnett economy for transportation services or new amenities like restaurants. There could be a plethora of examples that we could go over in that regard. Entrepreneurship development programs like this make significant local impact. And I'm sure you've seen that, especially during COVID and after. But there's something called an independent local business accelerator. And it's called a local multiplier of it. And so an independent local business actually recirculates four times more for the local economy, more money for the local economy than a national retailer, which is really interesting. I just want to thank you again for considering our plans on behalf of this small business community in Harnett, which is very vibrant and has lots of momentum right now. I am here to answer any questions you have related to the program and the information provided. Thank you again for your valuable time.
Any questions, ma'am?
Good to meet you.
This is already in our budget, correct?
Is this for any kind of small business, right?
Yes, some of the program guidelines are outlined on the flyer. I just didn't want to take up a lot of your extra time to go through everything.
Okay.
But people come back to the flyer to receive the grant, a winning business must do these things and they're outlined. And we use a model that is successful from Sanford and Lee County area because Lee and Chatham Counties and Johnston County all have small business small programs. Harnett did not. We have a very, very wide vibe, I would call it, small business community here, definitely. There's lots of networking, and I coach small businesses in Huron County. And I have counterparts in Lee and Chatham Counties. And they actually run this program already successfully. So the stats you see on the back are from a Lee County program, which has been in operation for a number of years. Over the last 30 years, you'll see the investment on the flyer from the Small Business Center. We actually incorporate this platform, so we cover the costs of instructors and supplement it with volunteer time from professionals in the community, like CTA's attorney insurance provider, who helped us with that instruction. But the RISE program, which is what we're modeling after, their success has been 14 new businesses opened, 40 new jobs created, five vacant buildings in downtown Stanford have been occupied, and then three vacant buildings in the historic Duncro area have been occupied. Any other questions I might answer? Thank you again for your time.
Thank you so much.
If you need additional data or information, please don't hesitate to contact us. We're happy to help you.
Anybody else like to speak? This time, I will now close the floor for the public hearing on the Harnett County's FY 2324 budget. We will move on to item number 14, discuss proposal by, I'm going to butcher this one, is Warupa Gadusu, real property owned by Harnett County.
Yes, Commissioners, I know this was presented to you last week, but we received an offer to purchase a piece of a parcel owned by the county. It's a 13-acre tract in Little River Township off of Lawrence Road and Broadway. The 2022 appraised value of that parcel is $78,880. And the offer from the individual, from Mr. Gadusu, I apologize because I haven't talked to him either. So I apologize for mispronouncing that. But we did receive the offer for that appraised value. And reviewing this property, the county does not have a use for this parcel. Therefore, we would ask to approve the resolution to start the upset bid process. If you do vote to approve the resolution tonight, he will have to deposit 5%, which is $3,994. We will, upon receipt of that, we will publish a notice of the upset bid process, and they'll have 10 days to, other individuals will have 10 days to bid on it. And if we receive a bid, they'll have to put down a deposit and the process will start over again until we have our final, the final bid. Any, if there's any questions, happy to answer them.
Questions or comments for Mr. Pell?
Move, we accept.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the resolution by Harnett County in order to sell real property. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's your name. Let's leave Madam Clerk for approval. Thank you, sir. County's county managers report, Mr. Trout.
Thank you, Chair. The only item I have is we need approval of amendments to the budget.
Commissioners, in front of you, you have budget amendments as requested by the Finance Director. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments as requested by the Finance Director. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's your name. Let's leave Madam Clerk. We have items for new business. First up is ordinance clarification on zoning issues. Please, Chair Morse.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lottler, would you step forward, please? I think we can make a little quick issue out of this. Mr. Lottler and Mr. Price and I spoke earlier in the week after this was put on the agenda. We were talking about if the code is silent, whether something was permissible or not. And Mr. Lottler has shared that there is some outstanding case law. He needs some time to review it. What I would recommend is we send this over to maybe July, give him time to do what he needs. How good would you, Mr. Long?
Sounds great to me.
Do you want to put an actual date on this?
Yeah, whatever our work session is, the first part of July.
We don't need until July.
Okay.
There is some, there is some legislation out there to, I mean, and it's something that we've been, you know, we probably need to look at. We probably need to look at. So it's maybe June 13th.
Did the second workshop.
The second workshop. Yep.
Well, there. I know you're.
There's a work session on the 13th and the 27th. Whichever y'all choose. Sounds good.
Thank you, sir. Sorry I had to keep you up here so late.
Would we like to put that on the 13th or the 27th?
The 13th, fine with me. I think that's what he recommended.
Any issues putting this on the work session agenda for the 13th of June? I will go ahead and put that on there, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Item B, discuss dry tap fees. You again.
To get Mr. Ward to come on up, we'll run right on through this one. One of the things that I've had, the reason why I put this on there is a number of complaints about the dry tap fees. Nobody's going to be happy with that. And then it was brought to my attention that you were reviewing doing away with it again, whether to continue on with it or not, so.
Yes, Mr. Trout and I discussed way back when we were talking about budgetative initiatives several months ago. You know, we've got a rate increase in the budget that's planned for residential and commercial water and sewer rates. And kind of as an offset to that, we've had, we call them availability fees now. But that's one of the reasons why the water and sewer system has been so successful. There are a lot of counties, especially in the state, that were developed like ours that gave citizens the opportunities to get discounted taps. Well, what people would do is they would sign up for the tap, but they would never use the water. So it never really benefited the system. And when you can't make ends meet, then it becomes a taxing authority. The finance officer actually has the ability to go out and tax to try to make the water and sewer system whole because people aren't contributing to it. So that's why the whole system was set up that way, way back in the late 70s, early 80s. And so, but it's kind of served its purpose. Like I said, Mr. Trout and I discussed that. We're sort of beyond that point where we need that revenue to make things whole, if you will. So we discussed doing away with them at that time and trying to make it effective July. And we discussed this initiative after you talked to him. And I would just like to say, if we want to start earlier than that, to do that, we can. It's just not as simple as saying, here's a cutoff line in the sand. There are so many things you have to go through as far as doing that. For example, we bill multiple times monthly. So if your bill's ending in three days, you know, I might can make this happen. But if your bill's ending, you know, a few weeks later, whatever, you know, it's just going to have to cycle off. So it'll take a few weeks to make all this happen.
I tell you, it sounds like you've already run through it. You might give us a date that'll work for you.
Well, I think we can make things pretty whole by July. Like if we start now, for example, we can try to get everybody, you know, no longer receiving an availability fee if they're not using water or sewer at that point, once we start the new fiscal year.
July 1st, July 30th?
Yeah, yeah. Probably, you know, July 1st. We will shoot for that. I think we can make that happen. If that's the board's wishes for us to go forward with that now.
And I make a motion we go forward with July 1st because this has been an ongoing problem in this county for our citizens. For many, many, many years. I mean, we have been taking the boot of people coming to us and running us down and running us down, and we're trying to explain the reason why.
Yeah, like a lot of times customers conflated with other issues that they're not always the same. But, you know, it's always up to the customer to get those taps to start with. And if they don't hook up, then they knew when they signed up what they were signing up for, so.
And I appreciate your candor on it. It sounds like you've got other revenue plan to cover this, and maybe I can go to church in peace one Sunday.
We, I understand. Yes. I mean, the rate increase will help offset the amount of losing the availability fee revenue.
Hate to interrupt, but we'll keep us on track here. I got a motion and a second in order to approve canceling the dry tap fees as of July 1st.
Common language, that sounds perfect.
No, not tap fees.
Standing.
Dry tap fees.
What is your current title?
It's dry tap.
The current, the current title is availability fees.
All right, so I have a motion and a second in order to do away with dry tap fees come July 1st.
Our availability fees, it can be the one.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Here's your name. Let's leave Madam Clerk.
And Mr. Ward, I appreciate you being patient.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Do we not have a close session?
Do I need, have a need for close? Do I have a need for closed session? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do you adjourn? We adjourn.